Two days. So I'm not really in the mood for this. Not really in the mood for this tonight. So I'm gonna keep my mouth shut.
Wait a minute, I've got the president's person.
Want my stub?
Getting ready to start?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the March 24, 2025 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to order. Mr. Carrier will provide an invocation and then we ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think tonight is probably best. I just heard of the passing of a good friend and servant in Brown Township, that we take a moment and honor his passing. Gary Dever passed away. He was a long-term, long-term, what was it, thirty-some years out in Brown Township as a trustee. He knew where every tile was located in Brown Township. You can ask all these guys in the front row, they had to deal with him. But let's take a moment of silence and prayer for Gary and his family, and bow our heads, and just for a moment. Thank you. With that being said, I wish us a prosperous meeting, one where we can work as professionals, work through the issues and the services that we do for the public, in the Lord's name, amen.
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts?
Here.
Mr. Carrier?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Vice President Teeter?
Here.
Ms. Vermillion?
Here.
President Cottone?
Here.
Council has copies of the March 10, 2025 Regular Meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission and Board Reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Greg Betts.
Nothing too significant to report this evening. The next BZA meeting is 17 April at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion.
There's the bunny hop that's coming up on Saturday, April 12th.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Commission, Cynthia Vermillion.
Also on Saturday, April 12th, is the Hilliard Earth Day to be held at the Franklin County Fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Starting at 9:00 AM.
Okay. Keep Hilliard Beautiful, Greg Betts.
There were eighteen folks who braved the cold last Saturday for Keep Hilliard Beautiful's litter cleanup at Tharp Sixth Grade Building. They collected thirty-nine bags of trash, one bag of recyclables, and some miscellaneous garbage. So a big shout-out to all those who volunteered their time and effort to help Keep Hilliard Beautiful. Additionally, as part of its charter requirements, Keep Hilliard Beautiful will be conducting a litter index assessment for the city of Hilliard this coming Saturday, March 29th, which will then be provided to their national office. I'll be participating in that index and will provide the findings to this council when the report is available. The next Keep Hilliard Beautiful Committee meeting is this Wednesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Morpsey, Ms. Crandall?
Had a great day of the region last Friday. Had close to a thousand people from throughout the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission region come for that event. Thank you to Council Member Vermillion and Council Member Hale for being there and representing the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Emily Cole.
Yes, the last meeting had a bit of a shorter agenda, so there was a more workshop-type walkthrough on the Big Darby Employment District, the history of the TAPS and negotiations and those things. And so for anyone interested, I know the recording is online and I thought it was a good workshop to kind of observe for P and Z working through.
Thank you. Public Arts Commission is me. I have no report. Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, Peggy Hill.
We got to tour the well last meeting. That was super awesome. It's coming along really well. Still due to open late summer. And then April 9th is going to be our next meeting and it'll be the Athletic Complex grand opening.
Great, thank you. Last Aging and Place Committee, that is mine, and I also have no report. Right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Then we'll go to Public Comments. We have one person signed up for Public Comment. Ellie Ward, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Ellie Ward. I live in West Jefferson. So before I begin, I honestly have a question for you all. Why did you run for City Council? If it was to make Hilliard a better place, have you done that? If it was to help the citizens, how many times do they need to come to you before you finally listen? I find it hard to believe that was anyone's motivator. And then finally, if it was for power or for selfish motivations, I see you and I'm sure the citizens do too. So last time when I came here, I had a speech that kind of got changed because there were definitely more important things and it's kind of good to see they're back to let their voices be heard. But when it comes to the park, I tried to go about it the correct way, the good old boy's way. I spoke to you all. I was met with the response that I needed to find a park and do the work. So I did. I selected Hilliard East Park as a good suggestion to be renamed the Timothy A. Ward Memorial Park. However, I made it known that I was open to any park so long as it could be named for my father. After numerous attempts, I was finally able to get in contact with President Cottone, who said she was working on it, but the council was struggling to agree to this. She told me she had the city looking into it and I would be given three options to choose from. When the time came, I was given one. I wanted to be grateful and agreed since I was led to believe it was this or nothing. No, this wasn't a park. No, it wasn't even anything anyone even knew about. But I was gonna make the best of it. That was until I asked about the naming and transfer benches. I was told it could not be named the Timothy A. Ward Memorial Park, yet there's already a Roger A. Reynolds Municipal Park. My dad actually is the one that named it for him. I was just following the same formula and the same precedent. So... I know you guys, basically the unfun part of my speech is you may view me as entitled, unwilling to compromise, spoiled, whatever. The reality, I'm struggling with my dad's sudden death and I was his healthcare power of attorney. I fought for him to get the treatment he deserved, that anyone deserves. This is important to me, more important than any of you will ever know. My dad got involved in politics by sitting in your same seat. I have done the research to see what all was needed, but I'm not gonna go that far. Instead, my plans are simple. Continue to fight for my dad's legacy and leave this council a better one than I found it. All I wanted was a park, but now I want a park and a council that not only listens to their citizens but wants the best for Hilliard. The time has come, as it did for my dad, where times need to change. You all will be seeing quite a bit of me as I will be coming to every City Council meeting until November. I plan to use social media to find what the citizens are truly concerned about and then bring it all to your attention. I will happily spend my three minutes here letting you know their concerns, whether it be trees, taxes, or any other concern. I will be scouring the city Facebook group, Twitter, TikTok, any and all forms of social media, and will be ensuring you hear each and every single one of them. Consider me a vocal messenger for your citizens.
Thank you.
So I guess I missed the last meeting. So what did we decide to do? Did we vote on this, or where are we on this?
Wow. No, we have not voted.
Why?
Okay, you wanna do this? Because... Everything that has been offered to Ms. Ward has been rejected. We had, we were at the point where we were looking at a park that is behind the library. It's a new park. And Ellie did express interest in that. And we, she volunteered to raise money to get benches put into the park. And then Ellie did keep asking for the name to be Timothy A. Ward Park, and I kept reminding her that we would call it Ward Park. And then when I gave her estimates on the benches, she said they were too expensive. And then the next time we heard from her, she came to the last council meeting and spoke about what was going on on Jeffrey Lin. And then she sent an email to me saying that she would be back tonight, and that's where we are.
So what's the holdup with naming the park after her dad the way she wants? Is that a big deal, or, I'm sorry? Give that to the clerk to put it in the record.
Thank you. I have a similar copy.
I guess, and wouldn't we buy benches for a park that we're gonna make a park anyway? I mean, wouldn't we invest money in it to improve it anyway if it's a park? I mean, this is a, I just want to understand. This poor lady's been here three or four times.
I happen to run into Mr. Gergel about a week ago at the store, and he did mention to me that they already have a plan to raise money for the benches. And he indicated the only holdup was the naming of the park. Is that correct?
That's what I'm asking.
The last I heard was... That it was too expensive. That's all that I, that's all I got.
So that part's...
Cynthia, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Tina Ward, and I live in West Jefferson.
Thank you.
You did not offer us a park. You offered us a pathway behind the library. That's not a place where kids can go play. While it was beautiful and we enjoyed it, the more we thought about it is it was hidden, just like everything else you guys have done. From way back when, someone else took credit for everything he did, like bringing ADS here, which you guys are making a shitload of money off of still today. And not only that, you don't care. You just wanna slap him somewhere. We want to enjoy this. Other mayors were able to do that. And unfortunately, you guys don't have a mayor anymore, and you guys control the person that's in charge of the city. So we have to come to you. And for once, it would be nice if you guys listened to everyone, whether it's Ellie or these people. You guys control the city, but you don't pay any attention to what your citizens want or other people want. And I think it's time you start paying attention to what these people want. Yeah, you can all be voted out at some point and more people come in, but at some point in time, someone like my husband is gonna come in here and he is going to do what's right for them. That was the only reason he did City Council. It is the only reason he became mayor, and that's important. But for everybody else, it's all about power. It's all about what I wanna do, or it's all about money. Okay, the people that give you the money to put in these subdivisions and everything else, they don't care about these people. They just wanna make money. These people don't care about them. They have to live here and deal with this crap. And it's about time you guys change the system. Because it's not fair. You just do what you want and don't give any consideration to the citizens. And if you say you do, that's a damn lie. I know. I lived in the city for a long time, and I was very proud of my husband for what he did. But the minute he was gone, it all went back. Good old boy's system rules. And as far as I'm concerned, that's not the way you work. That's not the way this council should be done.
Madam President, what park did Ellie Ward want to begin with?
Wants the East Park.
East Park.
And what's wrong with that? Well, I mean, I haven't been privy to all the conversations back and forth. I mean, you sent a note on an update on it to me one time when I asked for an update, and that's all I've gotten.
Let me jump in here real quick. So we, Ed and I tried to look at parks that may not have a name or may not be one that's already named that the neighborhood has connection to that park. The East Park doesn't have a name, but the pool does, so we weren't looking at that one. The wooded preserve behind the library, I think, is a beautiful area. We've done work to remove the honeysuckle along the forested area, sort of restore that so you can get some wildflowers back at some point and restore it to more of a forest area. Has a nice walking path through it. It's immediately behind the library where you have a lot of traffic, foot traffic coming in. We haven't really advertised this park, which I think if we did, there would be more people using it. Those coming to the library are coming specifically for the park. So we thought it was really, would be an honor for that park to be used. We will have to restore the path in it at some point. We didn't have, we don't have that budgeted. We don't have benches budgeted. Benches are not extremely cheap. And then we have, we will restore, there's a small detention base in there that's filled up with silt. We'll restore that as well. So we thought it was a really good choice. Did see some of the emails back and forth between President Cottone and Ellie, and there was discussion of what she wanted it named at some point, not interested in paying that much for the benches, and asking about the East Park. I don't know if the East Park was what she asked for in the beginning or not. I can't, I can't recall. But there was a good bit of back and forth. And our thought was name it Ward Park and then have a sign right beside it that tells the story of Tim Ward's service to the city.
What do we wanna do? Do we want to keep going with this every week, or every other week? Or do we wanna vote on it? Or what do you need, I guess, Michelle?
Well, there's, well, there's still discussion or not interest in this park now. So I think this one's probably off the table.
Well, if Hilliard East Park doesn't have a name, if it's just East Park, I assume that's a full-fledged park and has playground equipment and stuff? Yes?
It's immediately adjacent to the pool, so I'm not sure if people refer to the park or not.
Park separate from the pool.
Okay, so it's separate.
And so do you need direction from us to get this done? Is that, that's what I'm asking.
Right. City Council has to choose. Do they want to choose a park? Do they want to name it after Timothy Ward?
I'd make a motion, or Cynthia, if Councilwoman Vermillion, if you'd like, either one of us make a motion and just get this up and down and be heard and let's get going.
You're making a motion to name East, the East?
Park Timothy Ward Park, like Ellie would like it named after her father, the service to the community. I'd also, if there ain't park benches there, put one or two of them in there. We can afford it. And that would be my motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
So, I'm sorry. So the motion about the name is clear enough, but in terms of benches that aren't budgeted and...
You need an orange. So I gotta put that in the CIP?
Or it would be a supplemental appropriation?
Okay.
I think the question with the benches was with the park that was behind the library. It didn't have any seating areas, so let us look and see what's in the East Park, and we can come back to you if there's some need for that.
Fair enough. And if there is a need and we can't get a consensus on costs, then we'll work with the family to get them the money. But let's at least get a name to get moving on. So my motion's been seconded. I guess Dee, will you call the roll?
Do we have the name down correctly? I think it was, is it Timothy A. Ward Memorial Park? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be the full name?
Timothy A. Ward Park.
Memorial.
Can I just ask a question? Or is this procedure okay now, or do we need to put it on the agenda? Does it, is it okay to do this in the middle of discussion?
Oh, that's right. I think we may have to vote to put it on the agenda. Technically.
That's a good one.
Right. I mean, it's a, yeah, it's not, it's not on the agenda. I think it's either it would be a motion to amend the agenda to consider this question, or given this discussion to bring something back at the next meeting for more thought, deliberation.
I move that we add it to the agenda.
I'll second that. And I suspend my earlier motion until we get this one done.
I think we, I think we need to have council, more council discussion on this and not tonight.
Well, let's vote on it and find out. Councilman Betts has a motion on the floor, and I second it.
Right. So this is the motion to amend the agenda to add park naming discussion tonight.
I'd like to wait two weeks on this, so I can do a little bit more homework on stuff. But I'm not against it going on the agenda, but I just, I wasn't expecting to vote on it tonight. I've had some people in the community talking to me about this, and I just, I just say I wasn't expecting to vote on this tonight. That's up to Mr. Betts. His motion's on the floor. And again, I'd advocate for us putting it on our next meeting's agenda.
It doesn't seem to me like a controversial issue. I'd like to keep the motion on the floor.
All right. So this is the motion to amend the agenda to add the naming of the park under council discussion. Is that where that would go?
Yes.
Amen.
Mr. Betts' motion.
Right? Yes.
Mr. Betts, Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
No.
Ms. Hale?
No.
Vice President Teeter?
And this motion is to put it on the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir.
No.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Total under... Council discussion.
Okay. All right, where are we? I guess we're ready to move on to the business portion of our meeting?
President Cottone, there was several people that came in after I collected the sheets for public comment.
Okay.
And I told them that you would ask them after each one to, like each of the second hearings and obviously the generic comments, if there was anybody that didn't have a chance to sign in, if they wanted to speak. I don't wanna stifle anyone because they had to, I had to pick up the papers too soon.
Okay. So is there anyone, are there people that need to sign in, that didn't get to sign in that want to speak tonight?
These are all items not on the agenda, not on any, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the business portion of the meeting. We have some second readings tonight. This first item was postponed on 3/10. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 25-02 by title only?
Accepting the application for annexation of 5.642 plus or minus acres located in Norwich Township, Franklin, Ohio, Franklin County, Ohio, and assign zoning classification to the property.
Okay. Is there a staff report on this?
There is not.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. Did anyone sign up to speak on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Plank?
Members of council, my name is Donald Plank. I'm the attorney for the petitioner who also happens to be the owner. It's the Islamic Society of Greater Columbus. We're seeking to annex approximately six acres into the city of Hilliard. This property is completely surrounded by the city of Hilliard. It is not an expansion or an extension of the city. It is actually an infill site. We started the annexation in October. In January, there was a question from staff about what the Islamic Society intended to do with the property. They made it pretty clear that they would like to either put a mosque, or a daycare, or a school. But there were no guarantees from the city at that time, no statements that we were guaranteed anything. We have to go through the zoning process, and we fully expect to go through the zoning process. Based on some discussion that was happening at the previous meetings, this annexation cost the city nothing. The applicant or the property owner is required to extend all utilities to the site, and at some point, the people that are employed at that location will pay city income taxes. I did note on the executive summary, there were some concerns stated from the staff that said, basically, and it's on the last page of the executive summary, there's concerns about traffic, traffic circulation, utility plans, landscaping plans, possible variances. All these items are legitimate concerns for the zoning process, and they'll be vetted as a part of going before the Planning Commission, and then also going to the City Council, and if necessary, going to a board to get a, I believe there's a conditional use required on some of those uses. And with that, we're just asking to be annexed into the city of Hilliard so we can start that process. Now, with me this evening is Dr. Tarazi, and I'd appreciate if you'd let him talk, and if any questions after that, I'll be happy to answer those.
Mr. Tarazi, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Muhammad Tarazi, 3818 Stones Throw Court, Hilliard 43026. Good evening. Since 1996, it has been almost thirty years, we purchased the old Hilliard Library, and we started a school, private school, with nine students. Today, we have over 500. So many families, businesses came to, as a result, came to Hilliard, including myself. We bought houses, my sons. So, and since then, we have had several projects that we brought to the city. And I became more like a regular customer here coming every now and then. And we worked really nicely. We have had a great relationship. We always followed the instructions, followed the rules, followed the recommendations. At one time, there was a, one issue that the council did not approve, but they asked us to do some changes. We did. So today, I'm asking you to please get this annexation taken. So, today, I'm asking you to please get this annexation taken care of and when the zoning issue comes, if what we want to do is not agreeable, is not acceptable, we're willing to move on and find something else with the properties, whether, something that would be agreeable to the city. So, that's basically what I would like you to do for us, just approve this annexation so we can get the sewer and water. And if we have to sell the property down the road, it would be a plus for us. That's basically, and I'm willing to answer any of your questions if you have any questions for me.
Counsel, have any questions? All right. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dee, will you please call the roll? Oh, Cynthia?
I, I thought we might have a discussion.
Okay.
Or, okay. I just wanted to say, again, because these are properties that are completely surrounded by the city, it's, it's not a piece of property that's at the edge that we aren't obligated at all to annex. Not that we're obligated to annex this, but, but I feel like there's more of a responsibility. We, we know the applicant has clearly stated multiple times that if what they end up proposing doesn't work for the city, that they will look elsewhere and, you know, act accordingly. So, I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I think this is the second time in recent memory this year where we've had a group come for us for religious purposes. Clearly, the community's growing, busting at the seams. You can see that by the crowd here tonight. There's a lot going on. And I think we really ought to take a look at our comp plan because I'm not sure we designated enough space for religious uses. But that aside, I do think the applicant deserves a decision. We've delayed it. We had another recent application for annexation. We had no information and didn't apparently ask them for information. It was another type-two annexation. I think they deserve a vote and I think it should happen tonight. No more tabling.
Anyone else? Andy?
I just want to state, I'm, I'm tending to vote in favor of the annexation, but with that, I'm very skeptical of this site being big enough for a school that's going to serve your purposes, but again, you have every right to go through the zoning process.
Anyone else? Okay. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass 7-0.
Thank you, Dee. Ordinance 25-02 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read 25-05 by title only?
Amending section 127 dot 04 of the city's codified ordinances to reflect personnel changes and adjust salary bands.
Thank you. Is there staff report?
Provided a staff report at the first reading, so no, no updates. If you have any questions, be happy to try and answer those.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Pass 7-0.
Ordinance 25-05 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read 25-06 by title only?
Rezoning 231.1 plus or minus acres of land located at the northeast corner of Scioto Darby Road and Langton Road and the east and west sides of Elliott Road, approximately 3,600 feet north of Scioto Darby Road from RR Rural Residential District to, to Hilliard Conservation District, HCD, to be known as the Hill Farm 2 Development.
Thank you. This is the second reading, public hearing on this ordinance. We have multiple people signed up to speak. Melissa Brinkerhoff?
Ms., President Cottone?
Sorry.
Typically, you do the staff reports and then the public comment follow the staff report.
Okay. Do you want to do that first?
Sure. That would be great. So, Director Talantino presented extensively on this project at the last meeting. We don't have any updates on, from that standpoint, but we have two others. So, Director Shamp is going to present on some alternatives and ideas that we came up with, hopefully in response to what we heard from our residents regarding the roundabout and traffic calming options, so opportunities to move those up in, in the timeframe and within our budget. So, I'll let, I'll turn it over to Letty for that.
Good evening, members of city council. So, this presentation tonight came about in an effort of, to try to find some compromise between a few issues that we as staff want to advise city council that we think are important in terms of connectivity, but also understand the very emotional and challenging situation that the neighborhood is in. And so, we're hoping that what we're bringing forward here today might be an opportunity to shake hands across the aisle and provide some opportunities to compromise on a couple issues. I do want to point out that one of the residents, Mr. Keller, provided you with a presentation that I believe he's going to be presenting here tonight. And the first part of my slides was, I was thinking he was going to come at the beginning of the meeting and then I was going to provide some context, but I'm going to skip through the first few slides of my presentation to give him an opportunity to speak first. So, what we heard from the residents at the last meeting are a couple things. Number one, concerns about speed on Jeffrey Lynn and potential for those speeds to increase with the street connection of Jeffrey Lynn to Hill Farm 2. The increase in volume, which we acknowledge will occur with the extension of the street to meet, to connect to Hill Farm 2, and also safety and capacity, meaning delay concerns at the intersection of Cosgrave, Jeffrey Lynn, and Hoffman Farms at that intersection. So, when we talked last, at the last meeting, we talked about our prioritization process for traffic calming in a variety of neighborhoods and that the estates at Hoffman Farms, Jeffrey Lynn Drive specifically, was not at the high of, high of the list. And our thought was that it was unfair to the streets that do have a higher demonstrated problem to bump Jeffrey Lynn in front of those streets. But what we decided to do, assuming that if this connection is made, what does that do to this prioritization? And if you recall, in our neighborhood traffic calming program, streets get points for a variety of things and that's what established their original priority. Things like the 85th percentile speed cut through traffic and traffic volumes. So, acknowledging some of the concerns that the residents had, we said, okay, if we add points for these categories based on our criteria, where would that bump Jeffrey Lynn Drive 2? So, we added basically nine points to their score. So, if we were going to redo this prioritization today in 2025, assuming that connection is made, where does that, that changes their score from 40 to 49, which essentially bumps them up several streets. Now, it's important to know, the fourth street in there, Lakon Road, is actually, the problem area is in the more industrial area, not in the neighborhood section, right where the school is. So, I think it's reasonable to say that Jeffrey Lynn would be bumped up to number four behind Davidson Road, Norwich Street, and Hoffman Farms Drive. So, what we are proposing for consideration of city council is that we conduct a neighborhood traffic calming study of all four of these neighborhoods slash streets where we have, assuming we have an increase in volume, the cut-through traffic, et cetera, on Jeffrey Lynn. That would mean that we would be looking at the following four streets. Number one, Davidson Road, which is our highest problem street for trap, for speed. Hoffman Farms Drive, in kind of parallel with that, is actually Schoolway Drive because that's the entry to the school. It's also a wide street and we have higher volumes there. The street isn't as long, so the speeds aren't as high, but it makes sense that if we are going to look at Hoffman Farms Drive, we would also look at Schoolway Drive. Norwich Street would be the next and then Jeffrey Lynn would be the last. So, that is what we are proposing as an option. Secondly, there were some concerns raised about the neighborhood trail that goes through the neighborhood and the fact that Jeffrey Lynn Drive will cross that trail. And so, what we, if this connection goes through, if city council votes on it, we would propose to, and I believe we discussed this at the last meeting, creating a bump out at that crossing. Currently, Jeffrey Lynn Drive is 36 foot wide. The new streets would, in Hill Farm 2, are 26 foot wide because we don't want those big wide collector streets. And this crossing could be as narrow as 20 foot wide at the crossing because that's plenty of space for two-way traffic. And we would also reconstruct that location and put in a raised crosswalk. So, today, right now, if you go to the end of Jeffrey Lynn, it's a big turnaround. So, as part of the street connection, the developer would have to take that turnaround out anyway, and so we would require the developer to make this change concurrently with that action. And then lastly, the Cosgrave Jeffrey Lynn intersection, kind of went back to the drawing board and said, is there any way that we could potentially advance this project sooner? So, what we would propose to do is to commence design work. I think when we spoke two weeks ago, we said, you know, this wasn't in our capital budget for this year. The earliest we would start a design process would be sometime in the first half of 2026. I think we can commit to commencing this design work in the latter part of 2025. This would give us the ability to apply for that OPWC grant application that we talked about. That would be in September of 2026. And in terms of a schedule, our goals would be to begin right-of-way acquisition in the spring of '27, utility relocation in that summer, bid the project in the fall of '27, and then complete construction in 2028. So, I think that's about as aggressively realistically we could bump this schedule. Now, all of these things, so this is what, if city council chooses to vote for this and, and with the connection, these would be our commitments that we would make, is we would conduct the public engagement, concept design, and cost estimating for traffic calming on four neighborhood streets that I mentioned earlier. The timing of this would be, if you recall, at the last meeting and committee of the whole, we talked about some staff changes within our engineering department. We could start this after we hire the traffic and safety engineer and that person would lead in this effort. Now, we think ballpark, this is likely to cost about $80,000, which we did not budget in our T-163, which is our neighborhood traffic calming program. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier, require the development to, the developer to incorporate the curb bump outs and the raised crosswalk at the trail crossing. And then third, begin design of the Cosgrave Jeffrey Lynn Roundabout towards the third or fourth quarter of 2025. With other projects that we have going, we can't realistically start it before then, but I do think this would set us up to be able to apply for that grant funding in September of 2026. Now, the estimated cost to start design of this, about $270,000, and both of these dollar amounts would require budget, a budget amendment to our capital budget and future capital budget appropriations. Now, this is how we would propose this actually, a proposed budget amendment. So, for T-84, which is the Cosgrave Road Improvements, this would be basically the phase two of the project, $268,000, $80,000 for the neighborhood traffic calming program, which would be a total 2025 capital budget amendment in the amount of $348,000. Now, how do we come up with this exact amount? Budget in some respects, but also, so the Cosgrave Road Woodsview Roundabout, which was phase one of T-84, the Cosgrave Road Improvements, that contract closed out at the end of last year, and I think it was in December when OPWC finally paid their final payment on that. And the dollar amount that was unused on that contract that had been encumbered for change orders on the project was $348,782.89. So, when we were trying to come back to the, come back to the drawing board to come up with solutions and how we could get this done to show that we're trying to be responsive to the concerns of the residents and also trying to be understanding of budget constraints with this project that had just closed out, we thought, okay, well, here's an opportunity to take funds that are sitting on a purchase order payable to the contractor for the phase one of the project that would normally go back into the general fund when we close that PO out, that, that would give us that ability to reappropriate those dollars for this purpose. So, again, that's something that I think the city is absolutely willing to commit to if city council decides to vote for this. I think what we would ask of the residents is identify one or two key contact people that would be willing to be liaisons with us to help with this traffic calming study and provide information back and forth with the residents so we have a streamlined point of contact in those conversations. We would ask that everybody sitting in this room to please participate in this public engagement process because it's really important and we want their feedback and we want to make sure if we're going to propose to do something on the street that affects the whole neighborhood, that we get input from everyone so that what we're, what we actually end up putting forward, we have general consensus on. And then, you know, obviously, a lot of people are concerned about speeding on Jeffrey Lynn and right now, it's the people in the neighborhood that are speeding. And so, a little bit trying to be funny but light, but please slow down in your own neighborhood and when you're driving in other neighborhoods as well. So, that is basically...
Excuse me? It's... Excuse me? I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thanks, Letty. Peggy?
Ms. Shamp, I have a question. I'm sorry.
My apologies.
No, no, I'm sorry. So, another thought that came up last time when the residents were speaking was the concern that there would be a lot more traffic before the Jeffrey Lynn Roundabout was completed. Would there be an, a possibility of not opening up the connection until the Jeffrey Lynn intersection was closed off and allowing the people from Hoffman to go westward and use the connection kind of first?
So, just to clarify, make sure I understand your question. Are you saying hold off on making the Jeffrey Lynn connection between Hill 2 and Estates at Hoffman Farms until the Cosgrave Jeffrey Lynn intersection is closed for the construction? Is that what you're...
Kind of.
Okay.
So, if it were to pass tonight, that the, we felt that the connection was appropriate, could we not still make the connection but then not open it for public traffic until the roundabout was blocking that intersection and...
Okay.
People from Hoffman needed a way out?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that could queue up well. I think that's very possible. Obviously, I don't know the schedule of the development and, and assuring with 100% certainty that those two things align, but actually, there really wouldn't be much risk if the development falls behind and doesn't, is slower. That's fine. And if the roundabout project is advanced ahead of that, so that would not be an issue. So, there will only be an issue is if the roundabout project would get pushed for some reason and the development went really fast. So, I would say, yes, that's probably feasible. I think we could absolutely make that work. The devil's a little bit in the details because if you build the connect, I think we'd probably have to work with the developer and figure out the timing of their work because what we wouldn't want to do is build the street connections and then put some bollards in that pavement and then you take them out and then you've got issues you have to deal with there. Or if you block it off with barricades and then people move the barricade. So, we'd have to figure out the details, but I think, I think, yes, that is a real possibility and doing it in that manner, I think, would help to potentially resolve some of the concerns. And also, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, when that roundabout is built, if that roundabout is built, it's very likely that the whole intersection will close. So, it would absolutely benefit the neighborhood, give them an alternate way to get out, especially if they want to go to the north, because otherwise, they would have to go through the neighborhood, south to Woodsview, south to Scioto Darby Road and around.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Letty, how long does it take to put a roundabout in?
To construct it, or to design by the right-of-way, move the utilities, and construct it?
If this body says, hey, get it in, get it done, it's first priority.
The schedule that I gave earlier would be the earliest we could do it.
And what's the answer to that?
I think I said bid the project in late 2027, and for construction in '28.
And why does it take so long?
So it takes time to design the project. It takes time to buy the right-of-way. We have to coordinate with all utilities to move out of the way, and then you build the project. So I cannot commit to a schedule at this point in time, much faster than that.
2027?
Yes.
Thank you.
My question is, so this timeline is assuming we do make that connection. I, my understanding is that roundabout is still needed, even if we don't make that connection?
That's true.
What is the timeline on the roundabout if we don't make that connection?
So more than likely, if we do not make that connection, when it comes time for us to submit to City Council capital budget this fall, we will be looking at all of our capital budget needs among all departments, and determine whether we can advance this project in 2026 to start design. So essentially, six to nine months later than what's on the screen. That would be the earliest. But again, we're always have variety of needs for capital improvements, for both new construction as well as maintenance. So we're always looking at our budget in a given year, our bonding capacity, available capital, that sort of thing. So I can't give a commitment necessarily, but we do think this is a really important project regardless of whether Hill Farm Two is built, or whether it connects to Jeffrey Lynn.
Cynthia?
Thank you, Letty. So the $80,000, what are, what are you going to do with that $80,000 for traffic calming? What does that get us?
That gives us, for four neighborhoods, public engagement, development of concepts, different concepts, hey, we could do this, we could do this, cost estimates associated with those, so that City Council is better informed to say, okay, do we want to move forward with physical traffic calming measures on one, two, three, four, however many of these streets in the future? So without having that information, I cannot tell you. I know I've kind of ballparked six figures to put speed humps on Jeffrey Lynn. I think that's probably in the ballpark. But there's been no public engagement with the community about this, and there may be other options other than speed humps that have a different price tag associated with them. So what, that $80,000 basically gives us four rounds of neighborhood, community engagement, different concepts for four different streets, and cost estimates, cost estimates associated with those improvements, to inform your decision-making in the future, whether you want to move forward with traffic calming on one or none, all of the streets.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody else wish to speak?
I have a presentation as well. I wanted to give an update or an overview of some of the Big Darby questions, and maybe some of the misunderstanding that's come up over the last, at least the last meeting, and in some other conversations that council members have had with individuals and groups regarding the Big Darby. So I really want to cover three things. I want to tell our story of all we've done to further the Big Darby Accord Plan. We have a lot to celebrate, and this council has a lot to celebrate of what they've done to preserve and enhance our, our section of the Big Darby. We do, review the additional sewer capacity process, and look at the Accord references to the 2,000 ERUs, or the dwelling units, TAPS. And then a quick overview of the B-DART, so the Big Darby Accord Review Team, which I've given several updates to council, but I just wanted to give an overview of that as well. And many of these slides you've seen before, either most recently in some meetings we've had with council members, and also at your last council retreat, we went over many of these as well. So this first slide, just looking at the Big Darby Creek Watershed, very large watershed, 555 square miles. Eighty-four square miles of that is the jurisdictions that are within the Darby Accord planning area, and the city of Hilliard is 6.7 square miles within that service area. And despite being so small in size, we have really led the way in thoughtful and progressive environmental preservation. This, this area is designated as a national, state and national scenic river, and it's among the most biologically diverse in the Midwest, provides habitat for several state and federally listed endangered species. So the importance of this watershed is, is not taken lightly. This is just a map to show the Big Darby and the Little Darby. So the Big Darby's off to the, the right side of this, and the Little Darby area is to the left. And this just shows all of the ditches, creeks, and other types of tributaries that come off of, of both of those, that eventually connect down to the Scioto River. So a look at Hilliard's focus on protection and restoration. As I mentioned, we have been a leader with the Big Darby watershed in preserving and restoring open space, and in stream restoration efforts. Our open space standards and density bonuses that are recommended as part of the Big Darby Accord and codified within our zoning text have led to preservation of land and stream corridors through the development that's happened. And then some recent zoning changes that City Council has made have strengthened these development standards well before, well above what the Darby Accord recommends. And as we look forward, these additional sewer capacity, additional sewer capacity that's been provided by the city of Columbus really affords us the opportunity to continue thoughtful planning as future development may, may occur, keeping these same high standards of protection and restoration in mind and as part of our requirements. I know council has seen this slide before, but I think we don't tell this story well enough of everything we've done. And if you look at overtime of stream protection and restoration of both the Clover Groff ditch and the Hamilton ditch, over, over time we've spent, this does not show that first Clover Ditch Reserve. We couldn't find the dollar figure on that from 2006, but it's well over $3.5 million. And we've been fortunate to go after grants for about half, half of that. So two actions that council took to further preserve development, open space, and stream corridor preservation. The first one was in 2023, when council looked at the Hilliard Conservation Zoning District and changed the standards for open space to 70%. So the Big Darby requires or recommends 50%. Our code required 50%. This was changed to 70%. So this is for residential development. And then in 2024, this city council also approved newly created Conservation Employment Zoning District, again, changing the open space requirements. This is for commercial development to 60%, up from the 50% that's in the Darby Accord recommendations. And then as part of the community plan update, council also accepted this as part of that plan, that we would look to create a greenbelt around the outer western boundaries of the city that would allow for connected parcels and a trail system. We know that Metro Parks is extremely interested in eventually being the one that maintains and, and potentially owns all this land, to improve some additional path and trail connections in there, too. And to date, we've preserved 495.56 acres. If Hill Farm Two is approved this evening, there would be an additional 145.4 acres, bringing that total to 640.96 acres. So not, not a small feat there either. And then just to mention our trail system again, so we have this Active Transportation Thoroughfare Plan that shows existing trails and proposed. And as you can see, we've got a fairly extensive system that would be planned, and some of this is being developed now with, within the Big Darby area. And hopefully, this would eventually also connect out to Prairie Oaks with the coordination of, and interest of Brown Township. And as we move on to the capacity determination, I wanted to first talk about a few of the references in the Darby Accord. So there's some misinformation or misinterpretation as we see it, as to what this really says. So I'm going to read some of these quotes. The first one is, "In the Hilliard Expansion Area, which will receive centralized sewer conservation development at one dwelling unit per acre is recommended, providing for up to 2,000 dwelling units." And then it talks about current capacity constraints, limit development in the proposed town center to 5,000 equivalent dwelling units, and 2,000 dwelling units in the Hilliard Expansion Area. So that's related to sewer capacity. And then, "Analysis performed for the Roberts Milliken sanitary subtrunk sewer shows an ability to provide sewer services to 2,000 equivalent dwelling units in the Hilliard Growth Area." So this is, these quotes are pulled directly from the court document. And then there's also a quote in there about the Columbus Town Center. The city of Columbus has identified an initial sewer capacity for the town center of 5,000 equivalent dwelling units. So it's, this is initial sewer capacity. "The total amount of development may increase depending on sewer service availability." And then a couple more quotes related to capacity in our utility contract with the city of Columbus. "An analysis of available capacity of this sewer line determines sufficient capacity exists within the Accord planning area for an additional 2,000 equivalent dwelling units. Hilliard will likely annex this area as development occurs, and therefore, the development and associated sewer service will be subject to the provisions of Hilliard Service Contract with the city of Columbus." So I, I mentioned all these because this is a framework and a planning document. I know Law Director Boggs provided to council today a legal opinion on the question related to the 20,000 dwelling units, very similar to the other quotes that I mentioned. It's not requirements and mandates, it's recommendations. And related to these, if you go to this second quote, it talks about, "Further analysis reveals that if the current policies were carried, approximately 20,000 dwelling units could be developed." It goes on to say, "Propose a similar level of development." So it's not mandating 20,000 as a cap. It's not mandating 5,000 in the town center, and it's not mandating 2,000 for Hilliard. So our sewer capacity limits were set by city of Columbus when they did place a limit of 2,000 sewer connections or ERUs on our portion, but this limit was subject to future demonstration of sewer capacity. And as we know, with the approval of Hill Farm One, all of those 2,000 had been allocated to various developments. And then even as I was coming on board as the city manager, the council was interested in pursuing additional sewer capacity and additional sewer taps for this expanded area. So at the request of this city of Columbus, in order to determine if additional capacity existed, they asked the city of Hilliard to undertake a study that demonstrated additional sewer capacity does exist in this Robert Milliken sewer. There's also an understanding between the city of Hilliard and city of Columbus, that Tarleton Meadows and portions of proposed Hill Farm Two would flow to a Hayden Run trunk rather than the Roberts Milliken. And after providing our study to the city of Columbus, they did their own capacity study. They have interest in development in other areas of the Roberts Milliken, and their final model showed that 75% of the Hilliard study area could be added to the Roberts Milliken trunk. So what does that mean in numbers? Well, our original study in our request was for 1,775 additional ERUs or TAPS. Their initial Columbus model showed 1,065. After we had the discussion related to Tarleton and the Tarleton area, that number was increased to 1,331. And then just an update on Big Darby Accord Review Team, provided council with several updates on this as it has progressed. The, the Big Darby Accord Review Team used to be called the B-Dog, which was Big Darby Accord Working Group, and the name has been changed, and the mission is now for the update of the Darby Accord document. But it really kicked off in October 2024. There was a three-hour workshop, brought together 40 to 50 people from all the nine of the 10 jurisdictions that are part of the Darby Accord. And there was, this was to gather information on what are some of the challenges with the current Accord, and to see if there was a consensus around the fact that everyone thought there was a need to update the document, and there was that consensus. Gathered a lot of information from everyone that was in the room for those three hours on quite a few things. And information from this kickoff was shared with city council. So this is just sort of what, what is the focus? It, it is set up to take a strategic review of the Big Darby Accord watershed master plan and to update that document. The team includes five jurisdictions, Columbus, Hilliard, Franklin County, Prairie Township, and Brown Township. It was four previously, and I believe it's Prairie Township that was not part of that group that is now. So the purpose, as I mentioned, is to update the plan, but as written in this document, provide executive leadership, policy guidance, and general direction for the consultants. MKSK was hired as the consultant to help us with public input, stakeholder review, and help with that plan. It, it, under additional information, I just want to note, everything that happens with all these updates comes back to the township trustees and the city councils that would then approve individually as organizations' plans to, updates to the, to the Big Darby plan. So each, each jurisdiction that's represented on B-DART has one, we have an alternate of, I'm not available, or if Dan's not available, one of us covers the meeting. You can see the roster there. We've had four meetings since December 2024. We have a plan to meet once a month through the end of the year, and I've been sharing information related to these meetings with city council. So as I mentioned, MKSK was selected by city of Columbus as the consultant for the Big Darby Accord update. Their contract runs through the end of the year. That's, the plan is to have the update put together by then. And to date, they have started on the stakeholder conversations. They've established a schedule for public workshops, which I shared with council last night, and launched a website. Last week, I sent you an email that had that website in there, too. Encourage you to take a look at that. It's really well done, and provides a really good overview of what exists now, what's happened, and what's in the Accord document. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Crandall? Okay, thank you very much. All right. So now we will call people up to the podium to speak. Melissa Brinkerhoff?
Quick question. Would you like the applicant to go at the beginning or the end? The end would be fine.
Yeah, I think that's. Please state your name and address for the record.
Melissa, Melissa Brinkerhoff, 4587 Langton Road, Hilliard. I live in Brown Township. James Shimmer, the former director of the Franklin County Economic and Planning Department, said, "Back in 2009, we have arrived at a historic moment in time regarding the future of the Big Darby, proposing to you these first steps." They ensure future generations will be handed the opportunity. They ensure future generations will be handed the opportunity to enjoy this tremendous natural resource, as we have known it in our lifetimes and as the generations who have gone before us have known it in theirs. I'm asking you to pause until the OD on our study is completed and the data is analyzed, pause while the accord is being reviewed, and pause while Brown Township is updating their comprehensive plan. Columbus does remind Hilliard in their letter that the additional sewer taps are based on capacity. Columbus recognizes other limiting factors, such as compliance with the Big Darby Accord. Hilliard and its residents are original members, supporters, and key financial stakeholders in the implementation of the accord and its continuation. I'm asking that Hilliard follow the accord. This plan does have questionable open space calculations, using the Clovergraff Run area as part of their open space. The public needs to know that this financially benefits the developer by being able to increase their density. Council has a right and a moral obligation to ask and require Hilliard staffers to produce a clear developers agreement and make public who is buying this track and when is this land being designated as a park. It's unlikely that the developer is paying for the acquisition out of the goodness of their hearts and turning it over to a park operator for free. Another unclear area of this plan is the acreage to the north of the petroleum line and the acreage on the south side of Sioda Darby Road. There is a vague mention about future public projects, but it's disconcerting knowing that Hilliard and the developer have additional plans that they're not revealing to council or to the public. Has Hilliard used every square inch of available land in town for infill and redevelopment? I haven't seen any of those plans. Counsel could and should request director staffers to look at those areas also, they're in your comprehensive plan. While Hilliard does follow the accord plan in collecting funds generated from developments in the watershed, it doesn't follow the plan for setting aside a portion of those funds for accord purposes. Other jurisdictions participate, why doesn't Hilliard? So far, Hilliard's collected about $5 million generated from the $2,500 per rooftop fee. And then, a conservative estimate, based on a five mil, 30-year new community authority, Hilliard will collect over $45 million over the next 30 years, whilst still not contributing back to accord purposes. Counsel, you can and should direct your staffers to follow all the tenants of the accord. We ask that you pause. Thank you.
John Tetslov? Please state your name and address for the record, thank you.
John Tetslov, president of the Darby Creek Association, 2726 Camden Road. I'm not going to be able to use three minutes to debunk some of the information that staff has just shared. I will note that it's frustrating to see lines cherry picked out of the plan, taken out of context, and vast areas of the plan ignored. So that's frustrating. I would love to have an opportunity to sit down with folks and go through the plan piece by piece, find out exactly or discuss what exactly is in the plan. 2,000 limit is a limit, despite what your law director says. I will agree, it's not a legal limit, but it's a, it's an agreement you've made. It's part of the agreement that you got into with the other jurisdictions, so it carries weight. Columbus thinks it's a limit, Franklin County thinks it's a limit, the MKSK thinks it's a limit. I think it's a limit, I was here when the plan was developed, unlike some of the staff members, no offense, but I was here, I know what the limit was based on. It was based on the carrying capacity of the watershed, and it was part of a larger plan. And then, I'm just going to read you a little piece from the Hilliard Comprehensive Plan. "Hilliard's 2011 Comprehensive Plan Supported the Basic Guidelines Set Fourth in the Big Darby Accord Plan and Encouraged Conservation Neighborhoods and Low-Impact Development Practices. Based on development approved between 2008 and 2021, however, the 2,000 ERU limit has been reached." So the Hilliard Comprehensive Plan considers it a limit. Today, I'm still reading from the plan, "Today, there is land and sanitary sewer capacities to support additional development. However, Hilliard would need to negotiate with Columbus and the other Darby Accord partners to allow it based on previous agreements." So our main point is, this is part of an agreement that we really, really hope you choose to keep. And I want to just say, it's not just an agreement, it's an important tool you have, it's what's allowed you to take a different route than some other suburbs in central Ohio. You've been able to control urban sprawl, you've been able to develop in the ways that you wanted and in the ways that you, you wanted to design the development with a lot of open space. It's an important tool that you have, so I urge you, don't break the tool. It's what's holding back a land rush in western Franklin County, and that land rush is not just from Hilliard, it's from Columbus, too. That's my three minutes, thanks for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Heather Bickley, 6191 Jeffery Lynn Drive. Is it possible to see the last slide that Ms. Champ presented? Yes. Can my time be paused? It can't? While she pulls it up, it cannot? Okay, then I'm going to keep going. So tonight, I'm presenting a petition signed by 315 residents, residents are still continuing to sign this, in opposition of the Jeffery Lynn Drive connection. This petition is more than just a collection of names, it represents the voices of community members who may not be able to attend, but they may not be able to attend tonight but share our concerns. The overwhelming opposition makes it clear that this is not just a small group resistant to change, but rather a widespread concern across our neighborhood. By standing here tonight, I am also representing my young children and the children of our community. My son is also here tonight, the one that I have spoken about before, that I have saved from being hit by a car on our very own street across from our home. The past messaging from the city engineering department presentation was that, despite opposition from residents, connectivity still happens. Forging ahead with little vision, plan, and major opposition creates the impression that community voices are not being valued in the decision-making process. We are asking you, our elected representatives, to please listen to the concerns of the people that you serve and to prioritize safety, transparency, and proactive planning. Our requests are as follows, and this is in your email as well. One, vote against the connection. MI does not need our connection in order to develop. Hold city staff accountable by traffic calming measures. I'm also going really fast through this, so you might have to check through your email. Carefully consider again the information presented by the Darby Accord. I would like to call attention to and hopefully receive answers tonight, this evening if possible. Where was the proof in the data that it's us residents that are speeding down these streets? Why is Ms. Letty Champ placing blame versus partnering along with us? This connection has been in the plans for years, correct? Then how is safety not a fundamental part from the very beginning? At this point, any introduction of traffic calming measures are welcomed and wanted, and again, thanks for the bonus points. But why did it take significant resident pushback before the safety of community members was even considered? I am truly concerned about this. It seems like a reactive approach rather than a proactive approach, and would have been helpful at the beginning of the planning of this project. At the last city council meeting, when Ms. Champ was asked about next steps from a city council member, that's my time.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I really do appreciate that. Basically, it's felt like the answer was delayed, and that's what I'm continuing to hear tonight, even by the presentation that was just shared. I believe it was somewhere around $80,000 that it takes to do things that we already have available. So we have a toolkit that is currently on the website that lays out for us options that we can have. I don't understand how that's continuing to be part of that $80,000 when we have those viable options that are there in terms of the physical calming traffic measures that could be available. I would like to know again the time, the funding, and I think that the timeline for this is still too far out. And I also would like to again know why progress on the connection, I'm sorry, the roundabout at Cos Gray has been stalled when we know that it's needed. The city's website states that neighborhood streets are monitored to determine the need for traffic calming measures. Can we please receive specifics on how frequently monitoring occurs and what type of data is used to drive next steps? For instance, radar speed, rad, speed radar signs were placed on Hoffman Farms Drive in 2023. Since they have been collecting data for over a year, can we expect concrete, detailed next steps to address the speeding concerns in this residential area, which includes an elementary school? At the last meeting, city engineer mentioned that she had only heard feedback from one street that radar speed signs were installed, and the other eight streets where the radar speed signs have been added, she heard nothing. So she said, I quote, "I assumed no news is good news." However, is it reasonable to assume that no response means the problem has been resolved? Were residents given clear opportunities to provide feedback, such as informational flyers, group meetings, direct outreach to us? Some individuals do not know how to go about and find that information to contact her, nor did they know why those speed signs were even placed. Effective community engagement requires more than just waiting for concerns to be raised and inquires, involve actively seeking input. The issue is more about than just one street connection, it highlights the broader process of how city planning decisions are made and how community concerns are addressed so that a situation like we are in right now has more of a proactive approach moving forward. In closing, I want to emphasize that I'm here tonight not as an adversary or pointing blame, but as an engaged resident who deeply cares about my family and my community, and I'm proud to live in Hilliard. I will continue advocating for the safety and well-being of our neighborhood, and I trust that city council will take these concerns seriously. The position that you take now will be remembered in the upcoming election, and your decisions impact the daily lives of the people that you represent. I encourage you to make choices that reflect the best interests of the community. Thank you so much for your time, it truly is valued.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, thank you. Let's stop the pounding.
Pollard, please, we have a lot of.
Okay, thank you. And Frank, you ceded your time, is that correct? Okay, Joseph Vargisi?
I have Mr. Tom with me. He wants to yield his time to me, too.
I'm Tom Skengel, 6246 Pollard Place, Hilliard.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Vargisi, 6234 Pollard Place Drive. Esteem city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the Hill Farms development. Let me be clear, from the outset, the residents of estate at Hoffman Farms are not opposed to the development of Hill Farm. However, we strongly oppose the proposed opening of Jeffery Lynn Drive to through vehicular traffic. This is not about convenience and connectivity, this is about safety. The current design already includes the three other access points. Opening Jeffery Lynn is not only unnecessary, it is dangerous. Let me be direct, I'm here to talk about safety, safety, and safety. The safety of our children, our families, and our community. More than 30 years ago, when the City of Hilliard first planned for development west of Leopard Road, there was a blank canvas, a chance to design an infrastructure that prioritized both growth and safety. Instead of planning a direct road from Leopard to Elliot that avoids cutting through neighborhoods, the city approved a design that now threatens to turn Jeffery Lynn into a dangerous cut through. This is a mistake, a preventable mistake. This is not the first time a planned road has been reconsidered. Bridget Road, which is in our neighborhood, was once slated for connection but was ultimately halted to protect a few trees. At that time, the city council recognized that the quality of life matters and chose not to extend the road. That was the right decision then. Today, we ask you to make the right decision, not for trees, but for human beings. President Lincoln once said, "Government is of the people, by the people, and for the people." You were elected to represent us, the residents who live with the consequences of these decisions every day. So I ask you, if you lived on Jeffery Lynn Drive, what would you want your elected officials to do? Finally, let me leave with you with a powerful image. Years from now, you're enjoying a peaceful evening, retired from public service, sipping your favorite drink. The 6:00 PM news come on with breaking news, a tragic accident on Jeffery Lynn Drive. A child struck by a speeding car. Your mind flashes back to this very meeting, this moment. What would you think? I could have voted my conscience. I could have prioritized safety over convenience and connectivity, but I didn't. Don't let that be your legacy. You vote for safety, vote for our residents, vote no on opening Jeffery Lynn to through traffic.
Chris Boucher, 6178 Jeffery Lynn Drive, this is Claire, so this is one of the residents you guys will be affecting. So once again, I was here the last meeting, just to be clear, would like the connection denied. Quick recap from that meeting, with the builder that we had, millions of dollars, if this connection doesn't happen, millions of dollars is still going to be given to Hilliard with the next 20, 30 years. The builder will still be building the same amount of homes, you'll still get tax revenue from these 300 homes. A builder would never build a road like Jeffrey Lynn that was built 20-some years ago. Back then, I said, move into a neighborhood to be protected, and I'm once again asking you guys, keep my family safe and my neighbors safe. The last city council meeting, Letty came up here and said, "This wouldn't be an issue you die on a sword for. We're talking about the safety of our families." What a way to read the room. No one in city council is going to die on anything, including Letty. The people in my neighborhood are the ones that are going to be affected. We will live it every day. After the decision's made, you guys will all go home, but we can't. We can't get away from it, but you guys will. You guys will move on and do the next thing. I have a neighbor that lives across the street, two houses down, and then when their two young sons play out in the front yard, they pull their SUV out of the garage, onto the street in front of their driveway. Why would they do that? Last city council meeting, Letty rattled off all these past connections that made, seemed like no one would get to their destination. The roads she listed were never known, I would never know, and neither would the residents of Hill Farms 2. What I would know is a 600-plus cars are going to go past my house, and all the additional traffic from FedEx, UPS, Amazon, Kroger, et cetera. Traffic calming measures equal unsafe roads. Narrowing the streets between two neighborhoods does nothing, Letty. A roundabout does not solve the problem of our safety issue either. Letty also already did the traffic study, just tried to pull a fast one on everybody by putting speed signs at the very beginning of the neighborhood and at the very end of the neighborhood. Those have been up there for a while. There's a, there's a saying about keeping Hilliard beautiful, and I believe you mentioned it earlier today, "While 600 cars go past my house, even with traffic calming measures that Letty can think of, my neighborhood will no longer be beautiful or safe. I already have to hear the hum of the Amazon building and see its power plant." Please vote no on the connection to Jeffrey, Jeffrey, to Jeffrey Lynn to Hilliard Farms 2. You don't need to die on a sword. I just want you to keep Claire and the rest of my neighbors safe. I just want you to keep Claire and the rest of my neighbors safe. A vote yes for the connection would mean you don't care about Claire's safety or my neighbors.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Keller. I live at 6347 Jeffrey Lynn Drive. So I thought I'd spend my little time, and thank you for a little bit of extra time. I appreciate that. Today being a bit of a counterpoint to the presentation that was presented by city advocating for the connection to Jeffrey Lynn two weeks ago, right? And so, as I look at that presentation, and I jumped to kind of slide number four, right? There's a lot of talk around the connections that exist in other neighborhoods today. And honestly, I think Director Shump is kind of already addressed that there's some additional content she's planning on providing, and that's fine, right? My view of this is to provide insight and another opinion in that in the end, when you take a look at the city of Hilliard and the number of roads that exist from a residential perspective, that have been stubbed out in preparation potentially for some type of connection, but ultimately that connection was never made, that tells me that this is not an uncommon occurrence, right? That there are times where there's an anticipated opportunity to connect neighborhoods, but that doesn't make it right, doesn't make it necessary. It means there are opportunities where maybe it simply doesn't make sense, and my argument is I think this is one of those opportunities, and I hope that you guys see that as well. But if I move on to the next page, right, and let's say that connection does happen, and there's been a lot of discussion around the traffic concerns, and you've heard a lot about it, right, and a lot about the speed and the potential impact that that has. You've got the residents kind of on one side saying speed's a pre-sizable problem, right? You've got kind of the city to say, recognize this, speed is a problem, but maybe it's not that big. Honestly, I think, put all that aside, I think we can all agree that quite frankly, more cars is more risks for the residents that live on that street and who drive that street on a regular basis. And so I'm going to use my home to kind of make it real, right? I live on the very west edge of Jeffrey Lynn, and if you take a look at the picture, right, there are seven white cars that impact, would impact my home daily, right? Seven neighbors that drive past my house in the morning to go to work, and seven that come back in the evening, coming home from work. So on any given day, that's 14 opportunities for there to be risk to my family and my home. If we do this connection, that number jumps to over 120. That's almost an 800% increase in risk to my family and my home. How does that make sense, right? Where does that make sense, and for what value does that additional risk provide to me and the other residents of that neighborhood? And so, to continue to highlight that, right, there was discussion around the Hilliard thoroughfare plan, right? And the highlighting of the thoroughfare plan really kind of states the importance of safety, well-being of the citizens of Hilliard, and in addition to that, a focal point on pedestrians and bicycles. Well, help me understand how this connection provides a focal point on safety, right, for pedestrians and bicycles? That simply doesn't make sense. This is going to be an increase in the number of traffic, an increase in risk to potential to those people who are using the neighborhood for walking their dogs and riding their bikes, right? So how does this meet with the thoroughfare plan's goal and objectives? In addition to that, I kind of highlight the fact that Elliot Road is defined as a network connector within the thoroughfare plan, right? It is a defined street with a defined goal and role, right? And in the end of that definition, it highlights that a street like Elliot is not prioritizing through traffic, right? It's prioritizing access to homes and things of that nature. Okay, well, what is the purpose of the connection between Hill Farm 2 to Jeffrey Lynn? It is exclusively for through traffic, right? It's to get folks from their neighborhood to the east, to downtown Hilliard, right, to the Darby School system, to the grocery store. So if we're not prioritizing through traffic on a road like Elliot, right, how on earth can we provide prioritize through traffic on a road like Jeffrey Lynn that was never designed for it? And while there's been some comments, I think two weeks ago, around the goal here is to provide a little, multiple options to get from point A to point B, and ultimately to reduce stress on kind of major thoroughfares, and that certainly makes sense, but that stress doesn't disappear. You're simply shifting it to the local roads, where ultimately Hilliard has to make the decision on invest time and money there, right? So the stress doesn't disappear, it simply is shifting the buck to a road that simply is not designed to handle this level of traffic, in my opinion. Now, there's been a lot of discussion around the money involved here, right? And the money that MI might provide, and ultimately the investment the city of Hilliard would need to make for Jeffrey Lynn, right? Things like roundabouts, things like speed bumps, all pretty hefty investments, all at the moment, and it was highlighted today, not budgeted for, right? So how can we in good conscience decide to make this connection to ultimately impact my neighborhood, my residents, right, my friends, my family, without a plan around it, without an idea on what we're going to do about it and how we're ultimately going to mitigate that risk, right? We talk about all these things that cost all this money, and my view is that it's like, you know what doesn't cost any money at all? Simply don't make the connection. Jeffrey Lynn is already a problem, and that's been acknowledged by basically everybody in this room. Why on earth are we going to throw kerosene on that fire with no real plan on how we're going to mitigate it, right? Now, Director Shump talked today about putting some money together, unbudgeted money, to try to see what that plan might look like, but we don't have any action items out of it, we don't have any results from it. How can we make this decision today on this connection with this type of impact when there's simply no plan at all, right? It's, in my mind, it's simply irresponsible. And so, as I try to conclude here, right, really, what's the benefit? What's the value of this? And I really have not heard that. I didn't hear it two weeks ago, and I really haven't heard it today, right? Director Shump talked about some compromise, and that's great. Compromise is a little bit of give and take, right? We give, you take, you give, we take. What am I getting out of this, right? The availability to simply go west a little faster? Honestly, I don't think those residents are not going to want me driving through their neighborhood, in the same way I'd prefer the other way around, right? Is this beneficial to residents? I think you're hearing, no. Is this beneficial to the school system or local business? Not really. It's not really beneficial to developer either. You've heard that they're comfortable with taking this out. So is it beneficial to the city? If so, why? For what reason? What are we getting out of this, right? And that's the questions that ultimately, if you decide to move forward with this plan, that's the question you have to answer for all of us. Thank you for the time, and I appreciate the extra time.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Budinsky, 5750 Park Place. So obviously, my estates, neighbors, and friends have made it very clear that they want to see the connection done, stopped, completely off the table. I'm not sure if council will stop it, but at the very least, I hope that you'll table at least the connection part of this issue until we can, as a community, be sure that the current safety concerns are accounted for and addressed and managed before we create more issue to these roads. Jeffrey Lynn will have a direct impact. That's very, very clear. But the impact that I want to talk about tonight is the more down-the-road impact on Hoffman Farms Boulevard. Everyone's seen tonight that Hoffman Farms Drive is higher up on the list for street concerns, safety concerns, speed concerns, and we've been on that list for I don't know how long. We've had speeding issues, we've had safety concerns, the school has been there since the neighborhood has been there, 20 years now, and we've had these same concerns for as long as I can remember. We don't have speed bumps, we have a police officer every once in a while. We had the speed radars, they were taken, now they're back. Surprisingly, I didn't know why they were there, but obviously it was for this project. But as we've pointed out before, the data on those radars from residents in my neighborhood and in the estates, it doesn't look like that on paper versus what you see in the neighborhoods. Those speed results, they're not accurate, they're not of the full picture. It's flawed data that is driving decisions based, that are affecting our neighbors and our children and our families. So we would like for you to, at the very least, if this connection is not stopped, at least pause the connection, look at actual data. Let's look at data that has more validity. Let's look at data that comes from speed radar, the radar systems that are spaced or placed in better locations that give us more accurate data. I have a little bit of hope hearing some of the plans that were spoken about tonight, but on the flip side, you know, Hoffman Farms has been an issue for a while.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Adam Lehman, 6375 Riverside Drive in Dublin. I'm with the Nature Conservancy. I came here and spoke last time, mentioned that kind of the conservation community here is in lockstep on this issue. I fully support all the things particularly Mr. Tetsloff brought up here a minute ago. You know, we've come here again and again in front of the zoning commission to ask, do we just hit pause for a moment, you know, get the information that we need? We would really like to get through this Darby Accord amendment process, but if that's not practical at this moment, like, let's just hit pause and let's have a little forum, and let's get into a place where we're not giving you three-minute soundbites against a presentation with multiple slides that are, to be generous, spun quite heavily. You know, we've come up here and we've talked about how, you know, this is going to be a violation of the limit on taps, and we've heard, you know, the legal opinion that it's not a cap, which I think, you know, is, it's laughable to anyone who's really familiar with the document. And this is exactly the kind of thing that we can have a dialogue with staff, with you, and we can just get to the bottom of it and understand where everyone's coming from. So really hope you'll take that to heart and just get some information. You know, I want to point out that this process, the whole accord revision process, you know, this is all tied together. We got, you know, this letter granting these new taps showed up the day after the zoning commission approved this particular project, though it was dated several days before. And you got to ask yourself, you know, what's going on here? Because the city of Columbus, they ran out of taps years ago, and they haven't done this, right? Melissa pointed out in the letter granting the taps that, hey, we're saying you have capacity, but, you know, there's other things to consider. Is this in accordance with the accord? And it's because it's not. John pointed out, you know, Columbus knows it's not. MKSK, the firm that's facilitating the accord revision, the folks that were there, like John, they know it's not, they've said it's not. And so, you know, let's just take a step back because the Darby is on the brink, right? I once, I provided some information to the council that was censored by staff, and, you know, I was supposed to be here for that ODNR presentation that you guys heard. And I stepped back because, you know, ODNR got uncomfortable with the political nature of staffs stepping in and asking to remove data. Thank you for your time. I really hope you'll take a pause.
Rick Teedloff. Please state your name and address for the record.
Rick Teedloff, 6252 Talotree Drive.
Thank you.
I'm here today to speak on behalf of my neighbors, my family, and especially my two little girls. I live on Talotree Drive, which is the street over from Jeffrey Lynn, and my four-year-old and my one-year-old and myself and my wife walk that street often. Jeffrey Lynn, we use the trail on the west side of the property as well. First, I wanted to address our concerns being categorized as emotional here tonight. Our concerns aren't just emotional. The data provided tonight projects Jeffrey Lynn to become the number four problem street in Hilliard, and the city has already acknowledged that Cos Gray is a problem street. I had a lot more prepared comments here, but my neighbors said them very well, so I'll spare you the reiteration, and I'll ask you a simple question and spare you from being yelled at for just a few more minutes. Does anybody on this council here think that connecting Jeffrey Lynn is not a serious safety concern for Jeffrey Lynn or the intersection at Cos Gray? Show of hands. Who thinks it's not a safety concern? Good, we're in agreement. I urge the city council to say loud and clear tonight that the safety of our citizens and our children is of the utmost importance and commit to responsible growth in our city.
Thanks, everyone. We have no more speakers. Does council have any questions? We have another speaker? Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, Tina, I had to pull the sheet, so you need to, some people didn't get to sign up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought I had everybody.
My name is Dan Samansky, address is 6163 Pollard Place Drive. I prepared a lot of comments, and a lot of the points have been made, so I'll try to filter them out and just stick to a couple of things I wanted to reiterate. Regarding the following of the rules of the Darby Accord, there seems to be some debate about what the rules really say or don't say. So I just encourage council to, don't let any other groups flouting the rules and the conditions set up in the accord give you license to follow suit and disregard either the specific rules of the accord or the spirit of the agreement, the main point being the protection of this very important area. Regarding the safety concerns on Jeffrey Lynn Drive and the speed concerns in several streets in Hilliard, I appreciate that they took into consideration the additional traffic that would be added to Jeffrey Lynn with the extension of the neighborhood. However, there's concern about the timing of installing speed control measures, and I just want to point out, it's okay to be proactive regarding mitigation of speed concerns on Jeffrey Lynn Drive, as well as all the other streets mentioned. Taking action now to mitigate the speed concerns would allow the city to partner with the developer on their costs. There's really no need to collect any more data to justify taking action. There's no need to wait for a tragedy to occur to spur some response. Any traffic studies done now, especially in regards to states Hoffman Farms, would be misleading and not reflect the concerns of this new development. The problems with that won't manifest until after the connection is completed and the new residents move in and start moving into their homes and start using Jeffrey Lynn as their primary access to the neighborhood. The traffic calming must be a prerequisite for connecting estates to Hill Farms 2. Regarding the types of speed control measures, these have to be effective, not passive, such as painting lines or putting up speed displays. If this connection is made, a single raised crosswalk at the trail crossing, which by the way is nearly a half mile into the subdivision from Cos Gray Road, would be woefully inadequate to control the speed on Jeffrey Lynn. The trail crossing should be required to be remade as a tunnel and bridge, just like the tunnel and bridge that was built for the Sugar Run Drive Crossing of the Heritage Trail. The active measures need to be effective. If anyone wishes to see a well-executed example, you can drive on Martin Road in Dublin, which connects Riverside Drive to Sawmill Road. You can comfortably drive it at 25 miles an hour, but it's quite jarring if you drive it anything past that. Thanks for the time.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak that did not get to sign up? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Don Wagner, and I live at 6222 Andina Court. First off, I want to thank council for giving us time to listen to all of our complaints and concerns here. But I also want to thank someone else that hasn't been thanked the whole process here, and that's Josh. This guy walked into the pitchforks and everything and was more than accommodating on questions and concerns we had, and gave us insight into how this all came about. The residents' belief is that staff puts you in an untenable position here. They've given you solutions that aren't really thought out and are behind the schedule of this being developed. We've got studies who showed up here today. We've got studies who showed up here today by staff that said basically that Huffman Trails and Jefterlin were already top 10 streets of concern. Cosgrave Roundabout was already on the high list of priorities. So it defies a little bit of common sense that when this project was being laid out, that those three things weren't connected together and said, hey, we might want to address this. Instead, we got this notice to four houses on the end of Jefterlin and nobody else on Jefterlin. We got the, it's on-site drawings. It's already been platted, deeded to be extended. Who on this committee, on this council, has looked at site drawings to see if their street is stubbed out and have to worry about this issue themselves in the future? So the excuses weren't the best in our minds. So the ask, I come from the business world, so there's always the ask of what we want you to do. One is that budgets and metrics don't seem to be in play here. There's a lot of studies and plans, but none of them seem to be fully executed or being held. That's your job, in my mind, is you've been elected to manage our money and time with folks that are performing these studies here. This 80K study someone else mentioned there, you know, I can budget a warehouse, I'm a consultant in warehousing, I can budget a warehouse in any place in this country in 10 minutes. So I'm not sure why it takes eight months to go study to figure out traffic and call me measures. So you can stop the extension. MI said it's not necessary for their development. We can move on with that. We can get the $8 million that come with it. And take the time to do this the right way and figure out whether it makes us connect it. And if it is able to be connected safely, what we have to do, do that. Again, to borrow Joseph's, I don't want you to have to, in the future, look at and say, man, I made a decision that somebody got hurt and it changed their life and I had a chance to change it or make a different decision on that. So I think that's, it's also not about speeds. There was comment about the residents speeding here. Any of these residents you're worried about, we're trying against the other idiots that live in our neighborhood that aren't here worried about this going in. So that's all I have to say. I'll keep it to my three minutes. Thanks.
Good evening. Josh Barkin, Division Vice President for MI Homes, 4131 Worth Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43219. Ladies and gentlemen, council, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. And everybody that has spoken and I've met with over the previous weeks and months on this project, I appreciate their time and feedback as well. So as many of you recall, in August of 2021, we had the first hill project approved. And since then, we are down to the last 10 single-family homes and a handful of empty nester lots that are just open for sale. At that council hearing, I said, as we've been open in Plain City for years, I've gone into our closings every Thursday afternoon and met with so many young Darby Davidson and Bradley families that are moving out to Plain City because they can't afford to live in the community that they've grown up in. And our goal here is to provide great workforce housing that is environmentally conscious and in true conservation development. So through the process, we, after we got approval and started development, we watched very closely the things, the actions of this council and the city, whether that was approving a new comprehensive plan that, and a new standards for a conservation district, which raised Darby standards to 70% open space. The Darby Accord is 50%. No other Darby Accord member jurisdiction has taken the actions that this body in this city has taken. I remember going through it thinking, oh, my gosh, 70%. How could we ever do a project to that end? And here we are, 70% open space. It was looted to a land rush in western Franklin County. At 70% open space and a recommended density of one unit per acre, that is hardly a land rush. And with, it certainly won't be because Hilliard allowed it, because it's within the sewer, the sewer area is very limited that Hilliard can serve in. So all of that, fast forward to March 1, 2024, we filed a rezoning. We went in front of the accord in April, in May, had really productive meetings. And the only issue came down to this alleged tap limit, which Ms. Crandall and the administration has done a nice job explaining. There was a capacity study with Columbus that Columbus agreed that there is capacity available. And it was alluded to this evening that Columbus and Franklin County don't agree with that. They have both signed off on this confirmation that capacity and taps do exist. So we, after that, we then met with staff and we worked hard on a plan. And what was work, we knew that it had to be special, that this was a special area, it was a big project, and we needed to come to the table with some really impressive things. So we made changes. One of them, we had a longer direct access on Jefterlin, and the staff said that's unacceptable. We need to shorten it. We needed to make it less of a straight shot, and we complied with that. Also, you know, and through that, we went on and on. But the big thing also here was, how do we aggregate some of the best open space and really build on this green belt idea that Hilliard was so proud of in their comp plan and conservation district? We are calling for 70% open space. We're taking 265 acres that is currently farmland with pesticide runoff and either turning, reforesting it, making it prairie or meadow grasses, or the rest of it will go into a modern central storm sewer. So it will improve the water quality. And that was some of the discussion last week. Ms. Colly, you asked the right question, that it really is about water quality and water management, and that's what we're doing here. Our project will be better tomorrow than it was today for this 265 acres. Also, the ability to protect the clover groth, that didn't come lightly. That is a huge swath of ground that we wanted to protect. It was important for the environmental conservation. It was important for every, the parks operators that have looked at the ground. It was important for the aggregation of open space and kind of this green belt on the west side. So we're very proud of all of that. We'll address a couple of issues that I haven't talked about here is density. There were some questions on density. The new comp plan, as well as the accord, very clearly states it's one unit per acre with stipulated density bonuses. Hill 1 was 1.11 unit per acre, which actually received a recommendation of approval from the Darby Accord. So there is precedent for in excess of one unit to the acre. We are at 1.13 units, which is less than Tarleton and less than Heritage Preserve. So, and we hit, there are still very clearly three density bonus prongs that we hit within your comp plan. The other thing that hasn't really been touched on in kind of a roundabout way in some money is the development agreement, which is the item that is on the agenda next, but really go hand in hand. So this is where the city and MI, and the developer lay out what the options are and what needs to be done, infrastructure and otherwise. Here, we knew, again, there were a lot of issues we needed to step up, we needed to do our part. Every other development that has been approved in this area has given some level of new community authority money to the developer. We, for instance, fiber optic to every house. In Hill Farm 1, we wired every house for fiber because that was an initiative of the city. We are entitled to reimbursement. Here, we are doing it all at our cost and not taking any reimbursement for it. We are leaving that $8 million in the NCA, conservatively $8 million, completely unencumbered so the city can use it to address many of the issues that have been discussed tonight. The only thing we will get is a little bit of tap credit and impact fee reimbursement for some major regional infrastructure. We are also making a $370,000 contribution to the Jefterlin Roundabout, which is dangerously close to the numbers that were suggested tonight to help get the project off the ground. Darby area, I kind of touched on. Jefterlin, again, I appreciate the neighbor's support. It is my experience that we often do connect to many roads like this. I agree with staff's recommendations tonight that the traffic study, or the traffic calming should be explored. I, you know, Ms. Hale, I think, had a good recommendation that if there was something along the lines of, you make the connection, it's emergency access until a future date that this council agrees, you would get no pushback from us. But I, you know, it is my experience that if there is a stub that is a public street, we do connect to it. But I understand the considerations and will work with council to find an idea that is workable for everybody. And, you know, to end and really take questions tonight, too, happy to answer anything I can, is, you know, this is high-quality housing that Hilliard desperately needs. And we meet the Hilliard comp plan, we meet the code, we've asked for zero divergences, we have staff support, and we're here on planning and zoning recommendation of approval. And we ask the same of you this evening.
Thank you. Questions? Emily?
I have some to start, if that's all right. Thank you. I'm curious, the commitment from MI on the raised crosswalk, should we decide to move forward on the Jefterlin connection?
Yes, actually, that exhibit was put together by my engineers and we're, yes, we're committing to that and we will do it at our cost and think that it's a good idea.
Okay. I'm also curious, can you talk more about the stormwater management? Because that is like the number one concern I heard when I met with multiple different environmental authorities.
Yes. So 70% of it will go back and will become open space. We're reforesting, which comes at a significant cost. We're planning on to plant over 8,800 many trees as we are doing with Hill 1. And we will then also have our stormwater ponds out there that all have wetland shelves added, which is now part of your code. Many other jurisdictions don't have it. When we got Hill Farm 1 recommendation of approval from the Darby Accord, we did not have wetland shelves. The time Councilman Pete Marsh really asked for it, and we got it into Hill 1 after the fact. And so the one, and then also, we can't, a developer at a state law, that we cannot make the runoff worse than it was before. And, you know, we've never had an issue with that and we're committed to it. And one thing I'll say, you know, none of these issues are easy. I'm very fortunate to work with a company like MI that has been in business here in this community for 49 years. And the only way you can do that is if you stand behind your commitments and you do what you say. And that's what we're committed to doing, and I believe this will, and I mean, it's certainly a microcosm of a larger area, but this will improve the runoff in the immediate area.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm curious what the timing is on that open space conservation easement. I know that, you know, staff explained during our last meeting that that happens in perpetuity. At what point, if the project were approved, does that actually occur?
You know, that's actually a really good question. I think we've been doing it as we've been dedicating open space with the Platts, and it usually happens pretty early on. This clover groth, kind of speaking with some parks operators and what that looks like, but the stuff to the north at least would be right away.
Okay.
As soon as they'll take it, as soon as everybody will take it.
Okay. I would agree with some of the sentiments that I'd love to see traffic calming be more proactive, just more broadly. I think this process has kind of highlighted that as an area where we can improve as a city. And I think a lot of my colleagues would be on board for that. I know that's not necessarily dependent on your project, but I'm curious, the timing of the build-out, were this to move forward? And like, at what point would that actually potentially affect the residents of Jefterlin? Do you see what I'm asking you?
Yes. And so there's, this is a fluid area, and I defer to the scientists in a little bit. But we would likely, I think the phasing in the book calls for it to be in the second section. Again, if we went the route of putting up some type of emergency access for a temporary time, that would be okay, because at least if emergency access vehicles needed to get through, they could do that. But it doesn't need to be, I mean, so there's some flexibility on that. But we would probably be there within two years if, for, to get that. And then whether it connects or not is up for, you know, how it connects and what the restrictions on it are is up for discussion.
Okay. Is that something, I am transparently, I find making that like an emergency access and continuing with traffic studies in the interim appealing, but I'm also, I'm not a developer. And so I'm curious, like, at what point, though, would that need to be affirmed? Is that tonight, it would have to be affirmed that we're moving forward with that connection?
No. You could, I would probably suggest that you connect subject to emergency access, meaning no one else can come and go other than, we give the key to the EMS and the fire department. And set something that council or the administration, some other body can come to terms with what, if it's infrastructure that goes in first, what that infrastructure looks like, certainly the results of this traffic calming study that's been discussed tonight. The developer has no objection to that.
Okay. For my colleagues, that's something I'd be interested in discussing this evening. My last question is, I recognize that, you know, I took a lot of time to look back on historic projects that were approved that maybe frankly did not meet, I think, what all of us who are concerned about protecting the watershed would hope to see, particularly with the increased standards that Hilliard has implemented and committed to in 2023 and 2024. I know that, you know, MI is making significant investments through this proposal. And I know that you could have asked for a higher density bonus than what you're asking for. And I really respect that because it's frankly poor business and shows commitment to Hilliard and what we are balancing. My question, and I don't know how you feel about this, and if you've all discussed it, but is there an opportunity for MI to also contribute to like monitoring and evaluation in the clover groth?
So I guess it would kind of depend what that looks like. But the two, couple of things on that is, one, the hope was that us not touching the CDA money at all was going to leave this huge pot of money that could, we were going to cash contribution to the Roundabout to help get it up, preserve, make sure the clover groth is preserved in perpetuity with no houses anywhere near it, and get the other infrastructure set up out there so you could kind of work through the comp plan. That money may be available for those things. I get, you know, I don't know, I'm, you know, I wouldn't be able to say a number of, oh, yeah, we would do, because I don't even know what number would make sense. And so not knowing enough about it, certainly, we are willing to play our part and think that we're really doing that in a big way and would, I guess, I imagine that, you know, to study some of this and do some of the other things, that in an eight and a half million dollar bucket, it's probably not that much. There's also CDA funds that will start rolling off on Hill Farm 1 very quickly. We, I think it's projected to be well over five and a half or six million dollars on that project. We have about a million dollars that'll come into us, and then it's completely untethered. So that was kind of where my head was going, but, you know, opened up further discussion and with administration. And I know one of the, one of the conditions from staff is regarding the clover groth headwaters and that, so we're still working through that, too.
Okay. I have a follow-up for staff, but, oh, go ahead. I think you know what I'm going to ask you. Go ahead.
Just real quickly, so we had a quote for looking at just Hilliard for Ohio EPA allowable study, similar to what they've done, and I know it was under $50,000. So at the Big Darby Advisory Review Team, we've talked about contributions from the various organizations to look at all the jurisdictional watersheds. So that's something we're having discussions about. I know this council's talked about that before as well. NCA funds can be used for that purpose. Right now, the NCA funds would be going back to the developer, but we can look at that as some of those developments roll off and those NCA funds are available for that. So, you know, if we did a study now, and then we wanted to do another one in three to five years, there would be funds available through those NCA funds to do a follow-up study.
Is that something we need to put into this proposal? Or is that like a separate question for council?
So there's the community authority. So, there's, the community authority board may need that direction to look at that. I'll turn this over to Thad for that.
Yeah, we would, I think that we would make an arrangement with the NCA itself, since it would be a separate entity that would put that in place.
Because it's really not the developers' money going into it that, or coming out of it at that point.
There's developer representatives on the board, and there's city representatives on the board, and so we would just put a contractual structure in place so that those objectives are met.
So, would it be like some kind of a formal request from council? Like, we pass a statement, a formal request to allocate X dollars to... I'm sorry, Josh, you're kind of stuck standing here.
No, no. It's all good.
Let us look at that and bring that back.
Okay.
Good idea. Let's figure out how we put that in the right language and right form.
I would say that's important to me, in addition to some of the other things we've discussed, maybe tweaking on this. And the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, go ahead.
I support that, and in fact, I've had discussions with other members about using the, that's why I sent the email to Michelle about what does the CDA financials look like? So, what's in there off of Bright One? How much money is available? I find the discussions we've had about the cost for remediation of traffic and the roundabout, really, while they're costs, that's what the CDAs are set up for anyway. So, it's really a matter of priority, us creating a prioritization for Letty to accelerate that roundabout and the infrastructure. I'm supportive of Bright Hill, too, but I want the infrastructure in place, and I want to address the traffic calming and the connections in a thoughtful way. I thought Councilman Hale's recommendation for keeping it stubbed off until the thing's built out and the infrastructure's in place makes all the sense in the world. As far as this body goes, and I think to Mr. Teslov and to some others that came up around the environment, I continue to say to this body that we need to step back and look at what data do we need? I don't have any data that anything we're doing with 70% green space is saving one mollusk or saving any fish in the Darby Creek. I just don't. The last data we have that's valid is from 2014. So, in that respect, the Accord really hasn't done what it was, in my opinion, supposed to do. I've argued and I've said publicly that Hilliard is by far above everyone else in standards in conservation easement development. Josh has proved it coming forward this to us tonight. And my homes has waited, how many years have you had that land in contract, Josh?
I inherited it when I started MI years ago, so it was long.
And I think it was in contract before I started on council, and I'm old. So, I don't know that we can hold up these folks any longer now that utilities are available. But I do think we have an obligation to sit down and amongst the seven of us, have a discussion what we want to see that look like in the future. And I think now you're starting to see the financial mechanisms are in place to really start to give us continuous watering monitoring. You know, what are we doing? Is it just when it floods that it's bad, or, you know? But I think all of us want that data. I think we should, anyway. So, that's the larger conversation for when we're all gone from this body, what is the West going to look like? Do we expand westward? I'm advocating we do as a community, because we're doing it right. If you look at some of the proposals that Columbus is bringing forward, folks, just think sugar property times five. The Darby Accord is, the pressure's going to continue to mount in the Accord. There is capacity. Columbus gave us 1,300 taps. You can bet that development down off of Broad Street and the other developments that they're wanting to put in north on Hayden Run are a lot, much larger, much denser, and less stormwater management and, and green space, truly. So, I think we should do the right thing and lead in that way. So, it's just something I think we really need to spend some more time on. We did it last time, and we did it with some intervention, where we had staff involved. But I think staff should be there as a reforce for us and the questions that we ask, similar to the question I asked the other day about the financials for the CDAs. Because all those CDAs, I think they're combined, I think, I don't know the particulars of them, but I think there's more than one flow going into that development authority. And I think there's more funds in there than we probably realize.
I can give you the balance. It's a little over $39,000, and that will be committed to a reimbursement to developer to cover some attorney fees or anything that's associated with that. So, that's, that, that fund isn't to a point where it's receiving...
It's still coming on.
A balance, and it is, it's Car Farms, Tarleton, and Hill Farm One and Two that are, that are part of that. So, we'll, we'll start seeing some funding in that in a few years, but it's still a little ways out.
So, you know, we will have to look at what our financials look like, and they're stronger than I've ever seen, and we're above 50 million in revenue. And I, I could pull up the 2024 summary, but you all see what I see. We have the ability to make decisions, we just have to make them. So, and even if we pay for it, we could get reimbursement like a developer out of it, correct, after it is funded?
I'm sorry, what, what are you...
If we paid for water quality management, or review, or study, or continuous monitoring, if the CDA does have funds and they're free and unencumbered, we can use them to reimburse from our monitoring costs.
And those dollar amounts are, you know, not extraordinary.
Yeah, it's not like you're looking at five million dollars or anything. Now, the roundabout, that's a bigger, but I believe it can be bonded and it can come out of there, too. So, we just, I just think it really would behoove us all to listen to the stakeholders, and then also listen to the Josh and the development community, because I think they have a perspective as well on, on the whole thing. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Greg?
I agree with most of what you all just said, and I really like the idea of getting together with all the stakeholders to talk it through. I would like to, I'd love to see us postpone this for at least one meeting, so that we can get together, have a special meeting, where we bring together Josh and his team, we bring together the conservation folks, we bring together the folks in the neighborhood who are concerned about Jeffrey Lynn. And, because right now, I see that there, I don't, I don't see a lot of consensus, that we've got conflicting views, you know, and we're, we're not in a forum, we can really sit down and focus on this. I would love to have a genuine, open discussion dialogue, and because, you know, one folk, one person who comes up here says one thing, and another one says something that contradicts that. I'd love to get us all in a room where we can hear, hear both sides, ask pointed questions, and have a debate, because I don't feel like I know what, what exactly the, the situation is before making a decision on this. I'd like to have a little more information.
Are you asking about the traffic-related issues or the Darby-related issue?
Both.
The traffic-related issues, I think that we've, I mean, I've sat in the room with everybody, as it was acknowledged, and we've really, I mean, tonight was a frank discussion, and we're still prepared to have it this evening. And I think where some of the ideas being kicked around are a pretty reasonable compromise, that it, there is no access at this point until it, those discussions are having, we're sitting here saying that we're agreeable to that. On the Darby-related issue, effectively, what you're asking for is a moratorium on housing on the west side of Hilliard. Hilliard has put the comp plan in place, its code in place, that is above all the standards out there that are in the Darby Accord, and we meet or exceed them. You know, my preference would not, certainly not be to delay at this point, especially to get the, we, it requires us to start paying money to help solve some of these issues. It gets the CDA money moving quicker, so, you know, I'm happy to continue the conversation tonight as much as possible, but I just want to make sure we know what we're, why we would be doing that.
I'd like to just hear from both sides, so I, because I still, I'm still not completely convinced, one way or the other, regarding the, the taps issues. And I'd love to sit in a room before we actually move forward with that, that, you know, my big, my big concern regarding the taps is, you know, were they really tied to the sewer capacity? Or was it based on basic, what is best for the Darby, you know? And the taps issue just were ancillary? I'd love to have a deeper discussion with the experts before we move forward.
Greg, I'm, excuse me, Councilman Betts, would that be like the ODNR people, the water quality people, too, all those other folks, correct?
Absolutely.
So, you'd have all the stakeholders? Okay. I would be supportive, but I can't, I don't, they deserve an answer. So, I think if we delay it, it can't be very long. And I think, you know, Josh has been to community meetings, he's been to numerous council meetings, all that, all those folks in the front row are costing MI money. So, I guess I would be willing to consider that for a couple of weeks, and then us hold a special meeting that's quick.
That's what I'm talking about.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
My, my, my preference is not to do that for whatever that's, so.
What do you need to speak about, in addition to what you already spoke about?
I would be agreeable to that as well. My big concern right now, I am very concerned about the safety issues, and I want to thank everyone who's come out tonight to express your concerns. I have four small grandchildren, and I know exactly what you're talking about. So, I really do appreciate that, and I appreciate your, your passion for protecting people. But I also have a passion for protecting the environment. I don't think waiting for another couple of weeks till the next meeting to vote on this, but have another meeting, a special meeting, to really discuss in granular detail with the conservation experts who have concerns about this, I don't think that would be asking that much. It's just another, it would be April 14th.
Is this a time where we can take a pause and just vote on if we want to delay this? Or, I know we're in the middle of...
Okay, well, I guess I move that we postpone this vote this evening until April 14th, and have a special meeting to discuss the points of contention regarding the Darby in relation to this development.
Point of order, would it be for 2506 and 2507, or just, I'd assume both, because they're hand in glove, right?
Yes, I think that the, the second one is contingent upon the first one.
Would you also agree to a three-week window until our next meeting as the time for the delay?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to separate your motion to one as a postponement, and then the second one as having a special meeting, or do you want them combined?
That's probably the question. I'm not sure about that. I, I'm not sure if it matters, or...
I didn't hear the question, to be quite honest.
I asked if he wants to separate his motion into one would be a delay, and a second motion would be the special meeting, or is the special meeting only contingent upon the delay?
Well, I would, I would like to have, I would like to have the special meeting before the vote, so we can get, I, I want to have a little more information. I want to get all the folks, like I said, the stakeholders in the same room, so we can hear from all of them, they're not on a time limit, we can have the discussions, have the debates, ask all the questions we need to ask, get all the answers, and then vote.
I think it would have to be, too, because you're asking to postpone, and then according to council rules, there is a rule for a special meeting, so...
Okay.
That's my opinion, but I mean...
Right, yeah, I think it would make sense to bifurcate that, that question, once on delay, once on the special meeting. I think that if you're discussing then a special meeting to identify with particularity who those stakeholders are that you want to hear from in such a meeting, and what, I think that for that to be, to have any chance of being constructive, it would have to be very thoughtfully designed in terms of how it is conducted. And, you know, whether that can occur, how that would occur, I don't know.
I would, one other thing, the question right now, I mean, whatever happens in this meeting with ODNR and so on, it's a discussion of land use. Hilliard, the council, the legislative body, has enacted a land, a code and a land use plan that governs this property that is in effect today, that governs this application. So, if, unless, it sounds, and we are entitled to a vote on the merits of the plan that, as it stands with the City of Hilliard. So, again, if at a later date, I'd be happy to participate in any type of working session to help make this better and bring it to a head, but still understand that as far as the Darby, Hilliard has governing documents that govern land use in this area, and we meet them and are asking for no divergences. We have staff support and your planning commission support as well.
Well, in looking at the concept plan, the community plan, page 144, I think currently, doesn't it show a greenway, connected greenway system there? If I'm looking at, at it correctly.
On the westernmost part of the property, which...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this little green space right here.
Are you in the...
That's a, that's a concept plan to show where open space could potentially be, it doesn't designate specific parcels.
We've factored in to, to our plan here.
So, and I will add in, you know, it is, my opinion as your law director, that the tap issue, having reviewed the Darby Accord, having reviewed the resolution by which your predecessors on council adopted the Darby Accord, that the sewer taps under that Accord, those references are based on what was the then-current capacity. There's no statement in there that it had anything to do with some carrying capacity of the area generally, and that neither the 2,000-tap reference in there, nor the reference to the 20,000 dwelling units that was allowed at that point by right in the entire Accord area, neither of those serve as a cap limiting your ability to apply your zoning ordinances. And the Darby Accord itself is very clear that final decisions on land use and development matters rest with the local jurisdictions and are not predetermined by the Accord.
I understand that we are legally permitted to do it. You've convinced me on that one, that I just don't feel at this time that I'm, I'm ready to do it, you know, from a, I guess, more of a concern for the environment. So, I'd just like to have the discussion with, you know, the experts out there, like, you know, invite the ODNR, the Ohio EPA rep, a nature conservancy rep, Big Darby Creek Association, Ohio Environmental Council, Big Darby Accord Advisory Panel, MI Home rep, and then the Hilliard city, city staff, and sit down and just talk through this issue. I'd really love to get a lot more details, Josh, on, on what you all are doing to actually build and develop in the spirit of the Accord. I, I know you've done a lot of great stuff, and I would just personally love to see some of that in, in, in really good detail before we move forward. And like I said, I'd also like to, to have the experts who, you know, the science... And like I said, I'd also like to, to have the experts who, you know, the scientists that we rely on to make these decisions, have the opportunity to have a genuine dialogue with us that's not timed, you know, that, we'd be working to the standard and not the time to figure out everything we need to before moving forward. So again, I, I move that we postpone the vote until April 14th and, and we'll talk about the special meeting next.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, only because I feel like we haven't, as a council, I don't think, fleshed out our concerns about the Darby watershed and expanding west. I know some of you feel otherwise, but I guess because I feel like we've been operating with less than updated information, it would be nice to have a more concentrated meeting on that.
Hey, do you, will you call the roll?
This is to postpone 2506 to 414.
And, and 2507, if I...
No, he can postpone both of those, or should we make those separate votes too?
You could postpone both of those with one motion.
Okay. Okay, I meant that we, I mean, I moved that we postpone the votes on 2506 and 2507 until April 14th.
Cynthia? Oh, yes, second, sorry.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No, because the applicant has asked us for a vote tonight.
Ms. Hale?
No.
Vice President Teeter?
No.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
No.
Motion failed 4-3.
Okay, then, are there any more comments than before we vote?
To separate the two out, right?
Turn on your microphone, please.
Oh, stubbing it off until it's done.
When you say stubbing it off, do, do you mean actually do all the build out of it and then just not open it? I'm not sure what you mean.
I think that would be between the developer and staff, but only have emergency access for it to be opened at a later time once.
The infrastructure's in place, right? I didn't mean to over, I'm just, if you're going to vote on it, let's get that infrastructure in place first, that's my humble opinion.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That would be the roundabout, the calming stuff already ironed out and done, not just on the if come, it comes in budgets and the later CIPs, have it all financed and done and wrapped up so that these folks understand exactly what's going to happen, when, before those, that connection goes through, if that's what you're going to do.
What about taking the connection out?
I guess you'd vote on that first if you wanted to not have it at all.
Well, I'm, I'm really concerned because we, we have an entire, two neighborhoods of very concerned people and so I guess I would move to remove the connection to, from Jeffrey Lynn to Hill Farm 2.
Go ahead.
Cynthia, would you want to, if you're going to remove it, would you want to at least put up some kind of little something in there nice versus just, you know what I mean?
Well, there's a trail there, so you can't do that unless you rip the trail out.
Rip the trail out.
Yeah.
Emily?
Can I ask a question, or do, we have a motion on the floor, so we can't?
No, you can.
What do we have a motion on the floor for?
Cynthia motioned to remove...
To remove the Jeffrey Lynn connection.
Oh, okay.
A second, it still has not been heard.
I second that.
May I ask a question now, or do we have to vote it first?
You got questions?
I have a question for staff. Should we remove the connection? Does that deprioritize traffic calming studies on Jeffrey Lynn Drive and Hoffman Farms Drive? My understanding was they didn't qualify except for adding the points, should this be connected to what we could currently budget? I don't, I'm asking at large to staff.
Can you ask that question one, one more time?
If we remove the Jeffrey Lynn connection, we remove the nine-point bonus given in the traffic analysis to move forward with the traffic calming studies? So my question is, is that accurate, that we remove that nine-point bonus? So should we move forward with traffic calming studies that would no longer have Jeffrey Lynn on the list?
It's entirely up to city council. It would, it would not give it the same, it would be at the same point, so we were prioritizing for traffic studies and then to be, you know, funded with whatever came out of those.
Yeah, I guess I'm really concerned about not addressing the current challenges on Jeffrey Lynn. And I thought we had a stronger argument to do all of that if we were to move forward with the connection and to implement making it a conditional based on connecting subject to emergency access, making it conditional pending future traffic, traffic calming study and evaluation. I, was what I had written down, because I thought that's what Mr. Birkin was saying. He's nodding, so that's what I thought, but...
Well, ultimately, it's city council who can make those decisions, so I think, if I'm not mistaken, right, if, if we put, if we want to prioritize, prioritize traffic calming throughout the city before an injury happens or worse, then city council can do that, correct?
Correct, we provide a list of those that are more needed than others and council could choose to prioritize those however you would like. We're just giving professional input as to what we see as, as priorities. And then, once the study's done, then there's the cost of whatever may be chosen to implement that as well, and that would just have to be incorporated into the CIP. I will say, Letty did provide a timeline for the study acquisition and placement of the roundabout. We know roundabouts, when installed, reduce the severity of accidents and the number of accidents, so there's a safety, a strong safety element to that. She's already presented on the, you know, additional traffic that will be generated by Hill Farm 2 and where does that go? We've walked through those scenarios and then moving up the traffic calming elements within, within there. So we, I mean, we would stay with that staff recommendation that, of what should happen.
I guess I'm just concerned frankly with, you know, if skipping other neighborhoods that were on that list with a higher point value and Jeffrey Lynn does get the extra points if we do this conditional access for emergency only, that's what I'm concerned about, but that's, I'm just one person.
Right, well, Josh, can I ask you a question? And not, not to put you on the spot, I know at our neighborhood meeting, you, you mentioned that the connection is something the city wants, you're okay if it's not done, but you, you said you thought MI might still be willing to kick in toward the roundabout, is, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, you know, because you asked, I, I think that the best practice is to make the condition but have it, make the conditional, at that point, there's no connection still. That until this body has a traffic study or a traffic calming study, until the infrastructure's in as some of these points, there's no connection. The only people that will ever go through it is an ambulance potentially. So it, in, there's no saying that you have to open it up at a later date. If you don't at least get the connection now, subject to emergency access, which I assume you have all over the city because we do it all over the region, you will lose the opportunity to ever have that connection and it, I think it is important for a lot of the reasons staff enumerated, but I, you get, I mean, the result is no connection if it's not allowed to be anything but emergency access. So you effectively get to the same place, you just don't tie your hands that you have a gap there that can never be filled in and you're putting real money into. But to answer your direct question, yes, we'll still pay the $370,000, but what I don't know is, does it, to Ms. Cole's question about the points and the other things, does it call into question where the CDA money can use? Does it not define, that's not an MI question, that's a governing documents question, it calls into question the regional improvements the same way, that I think you're better off making the connection and saying it's emergency access until some date indefinitely.
Well, with the new firehouse going in right there, I mean, it would be just as quick for them to shoot down Elliott anyway into your subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope that that's the case when somebody has a heart attack or whatever the case is, but I, I, our house is on fire, so I, I don't know that to be true. But I do think you're getting the same result, you're just leaving your options open in the future and you're prioritizing the money that's needed to help with these studies that the folks so desperately want and need. I agree with them on that.
Right, but I, I guess again, I feel like as council, we can prioritize that. So where are we?
So your motion remains on the floor to remove the connection altogether?
Okay, any more comments or questions before we vote on this? Andy?
So the motion on the floor is to remove it altogether and not even have emergency access?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? So if this motion fails, we can still have another motion to make it emergency access only, correct?
I would assume so.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess, would you consider amending your motion to allow emergency access only?
I just can't see that an emergency vehicle would want to come through Jeffrey Lynn to get to Hill Farm. I feel like, be with the new fire station, they're going to zip over off Elliott and boom, they're, they're there.
What if it's to get into Hoffman Estates? What if someone's on fire there? I mean, it...
I mean, they do it now.
I, yeah, but think if you could be quicker, I, I don't know, I mean...
It's, it, I, I don't think so. I don't think it affects the emergency, but we don't have somebody here to answer that question, I suppose.
Well, it depends what firehouse they're coming from too, if they're on another run, then they're coming from somewhere else.
And, and I, not to get so bogged down in the specific emergency access, but it also leaves your other options open on your traffic calming study, on your CDA money. You might be tying your hands here tonight that once it's not connected, it's not a nexus to the regional infrastructure and you may not do it. I don't know that necessarily to be true, but you're effectively getting the same result. I mean, there's no tie-in at, at this, at this point. If you suspend it indefinitely, there's no tie-in.
Well, I guess I'm not convinced of it being needed as an emergency connection, so... Oh, yes.
I just think too, we don't know what we don't know. If Metro Parks does pick up the parcel on the other side of Elliott, that would be a really nice way to get from Hoffman to the other side without going north or south. And again, we may never open it, but if Metro Parks does put something over there, it would be nice for the residents to be able to have a voice rather than taking that away from them.
Um, quiet, please.
What about, like, just, I mean, I'm assuming the trail could just be there as a connector, correct? So anybody who wanted to use the trail over to, to the green space could do that?
The trail?
On, on a trail.
It doesn't affect, the trail that goes north and south, that the Ray's crosswalk, this does not affect?
Oh, it's not, it's not going to traverse the, the neighborhood? You would just, would there be any connection on foot or on a bicycle, is what I'm asking?
Would, no, because you've got rid of the connection. I mean, right now, there'd be a street and a sidewalk that follows the street, but if there's no connection, there, no, yeah, it wouldn't be connected. I mean, you'd have to, you're asking to our sidewalk system?
Or a trail. Like, would, would that be possible if, if people wanted to, you know, there, there's that trail back there, if they wanted to connect through the neighborhood on foot over to the green space?
I guess, if you wanted to put in a sidewalk off the stub there. The other thing I think that is also in play to not knowing what you, you don't know, is I think that for the Cos Gray and Jeffrey Lynn roundabout to get built, this traffic is going to need to go west temporarily to, to get out and, and around, or it's going to dump everything through the subdivision.
We went, yeah, we went through Catherine...
Um, please.
Catherine's Way.
So, I still, I'm not sure what I'm being asked right now. Is, is there a possibility to connect something to the path?
Yeah, just a path or sidewalk.
The path is there, I'm, in excess of what I'm offering, I, I'm not trying to be hard and difficult, but I, I don't understand what I'm being asked to...
Oh, I, I was just addressing Ms. Hale's question about if people from our neighborhood wanted to connect over to the green space, like, would that be possible on foot or on bike or...
Oh, yeah, they'd have to walk through our sidewalks.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I mean, it would be possible.
Yes, yeah, yes, there's sidewalks, they'd walk across the street and, and go.
Okay.
I have a question. Were you finished?
Yes.
So right now, there's a street there, but if that connection was not made, would you space the properties so they have larger lots and so those lots fill in that space? So they would have to cut through someone's yard?
That, that's a fair question, I hadn't really thought about that. Yeah, seemingly because of the stub's going to pull all the way back, do you, yeah, we'd have to look at that, that whole thing goes away and that, yes, you're right, that's a good point, I didn't even think about that. Because we'd pull it back to the loop and the whole stub would go away, so you're probably right.
So no?
I'm sorry?
So it looks, it sounds like that wasn't put into the contingency plan, but that's obviously something that could be discussed.
Yeah, could be discussed.
There is a motion on the floor in a second.
Any more questions, or shall we vote on this motion?
What am I voting on again?
This is to remove the Jeffrey Lynn to extension.
Do not have Jeffrey Lynn.
To not to have a stub, to connect it all. Thank you.
Do you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Ms. Hale?
No.
President Cottone?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Vice President Teeter?
No.
Motion failed 5-2.
Emily?
May I make a motion to connect the Jeffrey Lynn extension only to emergency access pending future traffic calming and additional approval by this body with staff review?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any staff comments? Say it again, please.
Yep. Someone correct me if I got it wrong, to only connect the Jeffrey Lynn extension subject to emergency access pending future traffic calming and input from the Staff Planning Department. I think I added a couple words.
So are you saying, you're not saying, don't ever extend it, you're saying, don't extend it until all of the calming measures are in place? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, all of the calming and additional studying and only allowing emergency access.
Until all the studies are done and if the studies show that, that it would be okay, then you would, then we would...
It would need to come back through the planning process.
Counsel.
Back through council.
So can I, can I propose language that would, I think would accomplish what you're doing?
Yep.
What you're attempting to do?
Thanks, Brad.
So that the connection to the Jeffrey Lynn stub shall be installed but not opened to non-emergency vehicle, vehicular tra- to non-emergency vehicle vehicular traffic until such time as a traffic study is completed for Jeffrey Lynn and any recommended traffic calming infrastructure is installed and approval of public traffic is appro- and council approves opening to non-emergency traffic?
I, I have, I have one amendment to that, and that would be that the roundabout construction and the other infrastructure that's being contemplated also be completed for that emergency exit to open.
Ms. Cole would have to amend her motion.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I misunderstood.
Are you withdrawing your second?
Only because I, I, I think it should remain just open to emergency vehicles and, and never be extended to non-emergency vehicles. So I'm gonna have to withdraw my second for that.
Does the current motion prohibit that? I didn't think it did.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sorry, what was the-
So, does the current motion I made prohibit it remaining only for emergency vehicles in the future?
It does, it does not, because it still has to come back through council. I mean, ultimately, it's a council decision whether to open up a public roadway.
In years, like, post-roundabout, years and years.
And, and my, my-
This is not an imminent decision, it sounds like.
My objection to that is that I don't want there to be a possibility that it would eventually be opened. Um, I'd just like it, you know, I, I think it's probably important to have it for the, for the safety. You know, we've already voted on having that connection, but, or, no, we haven't, but I believe it's important for the emergency vehicles to get through, but I'd, I'd, I'd really like to keep it closed permanently for non-emergency vehicles. So that's the only reason I'm withdrawing my, my second.
Thad, what's taken place is that Ms. Cole made the motion that you so eloquently said, Mr. Betts second, and now he wants to withdraw his second to that motion.
So then I guess the question is, is there anyone else who is seconding that motion?
I'll second.
Any more comments? Do you, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
No.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Motion passed five-two. Now I think we're back to 2506.
Are we? Yes? Okay. Do you, will you please call the roll on ordinance 25-06?
Ms. Vermillion?
No.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Passed five-two.
Thank you. All right, Dee, will you please read ordinance 25-07 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with M.I. Homes of Central Ohio LLC.
Thank you. Staff report?
We have no additional information from the last meeting. Be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Unless you have questions.
Any questions from council?
I would like clearly on, you know, the flows going into those CDAs when you get a chance, if you could still get that to us. Thanks so much.
This one, correct.
Okay, um, we do have one person signed up to speak. Melissa?
So to answer your question about CBA funds, NCA funds, when does that happen? It happens at the Big Darby Accord Advisory Panel Review. That's when the developer's supposed to bring their agreement with them. We ask Hilliard to do that. They don't, they don't do that. Other jurisdictions do. That's when it starts, okay? That's when the funds are designated, okay? You should hold your count, your staffers accountable for that. There's no reason not to. Remember, this is of no benefit to anyone here in this room, except for the developers. There's no benefits to the residents, there's no benefits to the city. The developers' agreement should spell this out, should have started at the accord panel meeting. You also should be asking about the Clover Grove. Who's paying for that, and when is it gonna be designated as a park? You cannot use public funds to subsidize private development. I don't think the developer's paying for the acquisition of that land out of the goodness of their hearts, and I don't think, you know, they're gonna donate it to Metro Parks. So they're using that 80 acres of the Clover Grove, because it's very unclear about exactly when all this is gonna transpire. They're using that as a part of their open space, their cornerstone of their open space, in order to get higher density. Higher density is profits to the developer. That's all it is. It's ingenuous at the least. I think your developers' agreement, you guys need to think about these kinds of things and hold your staff accountable for them. The other thing is the unclear acreage north of the petroleum line and the acreage south of Scioto Darby Road. What do you guys think's gonna happen there? You know, again, that's not being discussed, and it should be. That's what's part of their plan. The conservative estimates of $45 million over 30 years, these NCAs are already happening. Now, if they say that they can change them, but you've got multiple subdivisions that have already into these, Alton Place, Heritage Preserve, Tarlington, all that, that's already happened. So if they can change them, that's great, but it's up to you guys to make sure that money goes back to accord purposes. Not for water testing, quality testing. I mean, yeah, that's great, right? Test the water today, it looks good. We're talking about permanent conservation land. That's what's most important. So I'm asking you guys, in your developers' agreements with them, hold them accountable to all these actions. There's no reason not to. But ask council to consider these agreements. We may be too far already gone on this one, but, you know, you're gonna have lots of opportunity with all the other development that's waiting. Thank you.
Can I make one quick point of clarification on that, because this has come up a couple times, and I believe what she's referencing regarding the headwaters of the Clover Grove is that the Metro Parks had applied for Clean Ohio funds for that, because we believed we might be able to preserve that. That's not going to happen. So the developer is purchasing that land for their open space set aside. So this, these comments of some backdoor deal that's gonna happen is, is lately-
So why is that spelled out in the document?
It's not gonna happen, so I don't understand how we would put it in a development agreement. The, the Metro Parks will assume all the open space, but they're, it, it's not state funds that is paying for that open space.
Metro Parks isn't funded by public money?
The parkland is being dedicated either to the city or another public entity, so they're purchasing the land, and then they're dedicating it to us as open space. That's part of the green belt.
So they're giving it to either you or Metro Parks?
Correct.
How come that's not spelled out in the developers' agreement?
It is. It is.
Okay. All right, well, I think it's a little questionable, the wording, but-
It's spelled out very clearly in the development agreement.
Well, consider that, okay? Just remember, appreciate that. Thank you.
And that's at section three of the developer agreement, parkland dedication.
Michelle, can I ask a quick question? Was Metro Parks ready to make that purchase already, and would, and if they were, does that mean MI could have purchased a different property so we could have had even more green space, or?
No, I think that there, it was, there was, it was unclear as to who was gonna purchase it. I think what Metro Parks will end up doing is hopefully they'll go after some Clean Ohio money for some other piece of land within the Big Darby, within Hilliard. So it was, it was our attempt, not knowing whether MI, the project was gonna go through or not, how do we still preserve the, the headwaters of the Clover Grove? So that was something we were hoping to do, and I know council was on board with, so. And it just never came to fruition as part of this agreement or outside of this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have one question for Josh. Is there any, any possibility that you could reduce the density bonus to 1.10, down from 1.13?
That would be really, really difficult with all, from 1.13 to 1. I think that is probably part of the, the last vote, but, I mean, the $370,000, the, the impact to traffic out here, all of that is tied to a specific unit count. And again, I think that per code, we're entitled to actually more of, of that, so I'm not sure that will help the, the, the issue at hand. And I think also, just to clarify, so there is, the, the question that is out there is on who owns the, the, the open space in the future. Everything north of what I call the petroleum line that's outside of Hill, the city of Hilliard, is in the process of being deeded to Hilliard. The ground with the Clover Grove on it, that we maybe owned, go straight to Metro Parks, it may come to Hilliard first. There's still some question on that, where we're, us and the Bright family are working, and the city of Hilliard, working together to figure out what that should look like. And that's why it's all dedicated in, in the document, that that is open space in perpetuity, and we'll see what that looks like.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Anyone?
Yes, just to, just to clarify, so you've purchased that, that land we just talked about, and you've, you're donating it back to the city, is that what you're saying?
No.
Or to Metro Parks?
No, I, I have not purchased the, the ground. We have, by this zoning, said it will be permanent open space, and it will either go to Metro Parks or the city of, of Hilliard. And if Metro Parks wants to take it, that's gonna be an agreement between the Bright family and Metro Parks. If not, it will come to the city of Hilliard as part of this zoning for no cost.
No cost.
To the city of Hilliard, if that's the, the agreement that ends up. I, I can't speak to what Metro Parks would-
Yeah, yeah.
-do for the ground.
I understand. Okay, that is my question. Thanks.
Any more questions? Dee, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Passed seven-zero.
Um, I'm sorry. Ordinance 25-0-
Thank you.
Sorry. Ordinance 25-07 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. We have three resolutions. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R-25 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with MP Dory Company for the 2025 Hilliard Traffic Signal Maintenance Project CIP T-154, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Uh, this is a standard contract resolution for traffic signal maintenance. Um, we do these every year. Uh, we put the project out for bid. MP Dory was the low bidder. We are asking city council to approve this contract with MP Dory in a maximum not-to-exceed amount of $205,740, which includes alternate bid items and contingency for approved change orders. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, Dee, do we need, should we wait for Emily to come back?
I have her exiting the, the chambers at a certain time to bring her back in, but I mean-
All right, I mean, you still have a quorum. You can take the vote, or you can choose to wait for her. It's up to you.
Going to the restroom.
No, 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 we can vote.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
And as noted, Ms. Cole is out of chambers.
Okay, Resolution 25R-25 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R-26 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Newcomer Concrete Services, Inc., for the 2025 Sidewalk Maintenance Program CIP T-160, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Moved. Second.
Uh, this is another routine contract. It's our annual sidewalk maintenance program. Uh, there's a map in your packet. This year's program finishes Zone Two, which we mostly completed in 2024, and it also completes Zone Three, which includes Beacon, Carriage, Run, Hilliard Heights subdivisions, um, and along the south side of Cemetery Road between our two railroad underpasses. Uh, the low bidder was Newcomer Concrete Services. Uh, we included an alternate bid in this project because we weren't sure we would, depending on how the bids came in, if we'd be able to complete all of Zone Three. We do believe we can complete it, and that's what the alternate bid is for. Um, so we are asking city council to approve the contract for newcomer construction, a maximum not-to-exceed amount for their contract of $1,223,010, and also an extension of a contract for Prime AE Group to provide construction services, uh, I'm sorry, professional services during construction inspection. Uh, that contract amount is $78,675, so the total maximum not-to-exceed expenditure that we're asking is $1,301,685. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Andy?
Is newcomer new to us?
Uh, they've done some other smaller concrete jobs, but they are not one of the usual contractors that we work with. We actually had quite a few bidders on this project, so we're pleased.
Thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Passed seven-zero.
Resolution 25R-26 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read 25R-27 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for a health and fitness facility at 4402 Weaver Court North, known as the National Basketball Academy, within the M1 Limited Industrial District.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
John?
Good evening, members of councils. Yeah, this is a conditional use in the M1 district. It's, um, there's, there was an approval for a number of buildings there. This is in one of the buildings.
You got the clicker?
So the northernmost of those three buildings there in the highlighted area, that's where it's going. Um, you see it in the purple area. It's about three-quarters of that building. These uses, this is gonna be proposed for individual or small group instruction. The limitations on this site, so there can't be leagues or games associated with this. It's really just individual instruction mostly. The owner of the property has restricted the number of parking spaces that they're allowed to use, so there's not a- to use, so there's not a, a chance that they're gonna resort to leagues and games and that kind of stuff. So it'll be self-regulated through that. It is one of the conditional uses, planning commission recommended unanimously to council on the approval. Do you have questions about any of those items?
Peggy?
Can you tell me what are in the surrounding buildings? Because it looked a little out of place.
Well, they're all, they're all flex office, so there'd be a variety of, of uses, but mostly the development was approved for all of flex office, could have some industrial uses, could have uses like this. It's just a, anything in the M1 district is allowed.
But the other ones don't have anything in them now?
There are, I don't remember what the uses are in those buildings, but there, I think there's a few tenants, but...
Okay.
There's a variety of things. I think one's a contractor's office, but there's, there's a variety of things.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Cynthia, Greg, did you have questions? Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Passed seven-zero.
Resolution 25R-27 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. This concludes the legislative portion of the agenda. So... Ms. Crandall, do you have any updates?
No, thank you.
Okay. Items for council discussion, does council have any items for discussion?
Yes.
Cynthia?
I'm sorry, Liz.
Go ahead, I don't...
Oh, we, we had moved the park issue to, right, to items of council?
I recall. Yes. I don't know why you're looking at me, I didn't call the discussion, so... What do you want?
Well, I, I, yeah, I guess we were gonna move to name the East Park, Hilliard East Park, the Timothy A. Ward Memorial Park.
Correct.
I guess that's the, the motion.
To move the park and then...
To name the park.
The way Ellie wanted it, right?
So just a little background on this, I want to mention that, you know, since we've had the city manager, we've kind of been trying to move away from naming places after people, and then as a precedent of sorts that I considered seriously was that Don Schoenhardt, who was a 20-year mayor, has a, I don't know, a stone in, in First Responders Park, and I thought that would be appropriate for former Mayor Ward. So that was part of the reasoning for, you know, not jumping on the idea of, of a park. And then as we, you know, went through the process, city manager Crandall and I would talk about this, and I would make presentations to Ellie, and, and they would be okay, and then, then they wouldn't be okay. And then, so it was, it was just like a, it was constantly changing, like we never settled on anything at first. You know, I think you and you, you said that you and your mother both really liked the, the park behind the library, but then you didn't like the park behind the library, so it was just very difficult to keep up with the changing and to never be able to satisfy anything that you requested. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, so you'd have a little bit of background. That's...
So do we have a motion on the floor to name it that, or do you need, what do you need?
Sir, there is no motion on the floor. I actually withdrew that motion, so there'd have to be another motion, a second, because that was motions...
Thad, are you okay with it going tonight, or do you need it on the next, do you need an item for the next meeting, or what's the correct way to do it?
I, I can say I have not honestly looked at what action was taken by council in the past to name the parks that it has named, whether that be Roger Reynolds or First Responders Park. You know, my honest preference would be to have something that is on the agenda, that is in writing, that can be relied upon and referred to in the future. And so I would submit to you that making a decision like this on the fly on the floor of your council meeting is not a good practice.
So can we motion or move to have staff or president of the council set it up for the next meeting?
So, Thad, would it be a motion and a second to have legislation prepared for the next regular meeting? Is that appropriate?
That's what I meant to say, Dee.
So I guess I remove my original motion and remove to have legislation prepared for the next council meeting to name the Hilliard East Park, the Timothy A. Ward Memorial Park.
I second.
I'm sorry, Greg, did you, did you second? Okay, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Passed six-one.
Okay, then I believe we are ready to adjourn, is that correct? All in favor, say aye. The same sign? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
I knew it, I just wanted you to say it. You're being a good lawyer, actually.